Welcome to the second hearing of the committee's inquiry into the ability of local governments to fund infrastructure and services. I acknowledge the Gadigal people of the Oura nation, on whose lands we are meeting today, and pay my respects to their elders, past, present, and emerging. I acknowledge any Aboriginal people who also may be with us today. My name's Emily Saval, I'm the Chair of the Committee today. I ask everyone in the room to please turn their mobile phones to silent. Just a reminder about parliamentary privilege. Parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses in relation to the evidence they give today, however it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of the hearing. I urge witnesses to be careful about making comments to the media or to others after completing their evidence. In addition, the Legislative Council has adopted to provide procedural fairness for inquiry participants. I encourage committee members and witnesses to be mindful of these procedures. Two of the witnesses now welcome, and thank you for making the time to give evidence to this important inquiry today. Could each witness, starting from my left, please state their name and position, title, and swear either the oath or the affirmation?
Certainly. Craig Swit McNahe, General Manager of Alara Council and Vice President of Local Government Professionals, New South Wales. I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Good morning, my name's David Taxton, I'm the General Manager of Georges River Council and the President of Local Government Professionals, New South Wales, and I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Richard Sheridan, I'm the Director of City Performance at Bayside Council, and also the Chair of the Local Government Finance Professionals. I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you, and would any of you like to start by making a short opening statement?
Through Chair, I'm happy to do that. Obviously, thank you for having us in as Local Government Professionals. We're a group of people that obviously work in council and volunteer our time as a group of accounting and finance professionals to, you know, embed a local government and provide a forum for us to get together and learn from each other and tackle the issues of the day that we deal with in local government. I've been in local government for about 10 years now, and I come, previously I came from the commercial sector, so I joined local government at the time of the 2014 inquiries when they were calling out for CFOs to join the industry to be a bit more strategic in our thinking, so I was part of that batch, and I've been involved in two malformations obviously since that, so I've had a fairly fun career in local government today, so I'm happy to be here and happy to share any experience we can share with you. Really, for us, what we've been talking about for 10 years is financial sustainability, and the reason we've been talking about it is because in our surveys we do with General Managers, the two highest risks of local government, that's financial sustainability and cyber risks. The only reason financial sustainability remains the highest is because we haven't resolved the problem yet. But, you know, cyber is really beating on the door in terms of our second biggest risk, so that's obviously why we're quite keen to provide any information to this hearing at the moment. And really, from our perspective, financial sustainability is really about the council's individual ability to fund services they've committed to in their long-term financial plan. It's more than just the rates that we collect, it's actually how do we actually fund the council going forward using the IPNR process, and that's where we put a lot of our focus in when we do our talk to councils and talk to their community, is really how are we going to keep funding the business going forward. For us, I think three issues really come out from reviews we've had recently. One is that, you know, the cost of local government, while the price and what Ipart do is important, it's also the volume of work that we do, and you hear quite often that we're taking on a lot more work as we go, that's not built into the price indicators. So really, cost is made up of price and volume, so we always reinforce that with Ipart, that, you know, they can capture the price of increases and we support a lot of the work they do, but if we take on more things through developer contributions, building new facilities, doing a lot of notice motions through council, we get about 200 every four years, asking for new services and new things that we should be doing, they're all small but they all sort of add up, and then we take on grants and provide new services, so all those things add to our cost base over time, and that's kind of why the cost of councils have sort of outstripped some of the CPI that you've seen in that Ipart report. The second issue we'd talk about is really the income constraints. Ipart will capture the costs quite well in their indicator, but some of the statutory fees that we have in council have been a hold for a long time, and this causes issues in terms of our net costs of our services are always increasing, but it's not captured by the rate peg. So constantly councils are always having to stretch a little bit harder just to kind of factor that, so any time we can actually get rid of some of those statutory fees that don't go up by CPI, we think that's, those little wins for us would be a massive improvement to our financial sustainability. And the last one is really, we've been talking about this issue for a lot of years, and it doesn't feel like anyone's got the delegation to kind of fix financial sustainability. Well, I hear quite often people say, "My scope of this review is to do this and I can't do any more," so I guess one of the things we'd call out as professionals is, get out of this committee, is how are we actually going to make the changes we need to make, and who's going to have the delegation to actually make those changes? That's my call out for you guys. Thank you.
Compelling pitch, thank you. I'll start with questions we've adopted to just have free-flowing questions, so I'll just throw out to the committee now, see if there's any questions. I'm happy to start. Questions, I suppose, for all of you. In your experience, why do councils enter financial trouble?
How long have we got? I might start. And I think this has already been spoken to in some of the, in your previous hearing, and no doubt in many other submissions, which I've heard a few of. We've got elected bodies, and no disrespect to any elected bodies, but they want to make decisions for the benefit of their community, which is all fine and good, and Richard's just spoken about all the different motions we end up dealing with, and appropriately through the years, but they all do add a cost. So I think there's always this issue of priority, and no problem if there's 200 notices of motion during a term of council, that's fine, but we can't just continue to add and add and add the service delivery that we do, or adding new services, without taking a really hard look and swallowing the bitter pill of, "We just don't have enough money to do it all." So ultimately, you then start to reduce services in other areas so that you can do the new things, because the rate peg may not be enough to cover it, you may not wish to apply for a special rate variation for all sorts of reasons, so you've still got this relatively limited income revenue pie, but we're being asked to do more and more with it, which is highly appropriate, as I say, for councilors to wish to do that, but you have got to have the priority conversation. Now, at the end of the day, the three of us sitting here as the bureaucracy of local government can put forward all the best arguments as to why and why not, we don't make those final decisions, and then we need to manage what those decisions are. And invariably, some of those decisions do put strain on council. Now, I do want to just very much declare, this isn't all about how bad councillors are, that's not the issue. We also have to get our act together and make sure we're as efficient and, I guess, effective as we can be with the monies that we do have, and I guess, one benefit, and I use the term loosely, of having a rate peg, is that you know that you're going to have your rates increased by, let's say, 3%, just for the argument, and you know what you can work within. But it is incumbent on all of us to make sure that we are doing what we can to be as effective and efficient, what are the productivity gains that we can make, but some of that's very difficult, and again, it gets to the size of your council, have you got the ability, the capability, and capacity to actually take key issues like productivity and do something positive to reduce your costs. But I would also say, you can only reduce your costs so much without starting to impact on the service quality that you are delivering to the community. So there's many, many reasons why we end up in these difficult situations, and I'll throw in for the argument, grants, which are fabulously welcomed at many points during our council lives, but they're often leaving councils with a lot of cost that we don't have the funds to maintain, whatever it was that we've just built through the grant funding. So there's lots of different issues, but hence I jokingly say, "How long have we got?" But I think there's some of the key issues that pop up.
So you mentioned councillors and their involvement. Do councillors need more involvement in the budget-setting process? And, you know, is there a need to increase accountability measures for, you know, budget overruns or anything like that?
Look, I'll leave the overruns a bit, but I think the issue is, and I can only talk for my councillors, are very involved in the budget process and are very alert to all the different strings, I guess, that need to be pulled to ensure that the ratios that we're all working towards and the benchmarks are being met, you do X over here will impact Y, and so I can speak for my councillors being very involved in all of that and very much taking that into consideration when they make decisions. There are certainly lots of conversations happening at local government at the moment around, should councillors get more involved at sort of line item detail of budgets? I certainly don't think I've met a councillor that wants to do that, and I don't know that they necessarily need to, because that's why we're employed as General Managers, to manage that level of detail. And sorry, the last part of your question was?
Do they need to be more, held more accountable for budget overruns, for expenditure overruns?
It's an interesting question, and I'll tread lightly. We are held very accountable, clearly, as the General Manager is ultimately responsible for most of those things, but often, it's not decisions that we have made that end up in the difficult situation we may be. I don't know how you would practically hold councilors to, accountable for budget overruns, other than the four-year election cycle, to be frank.
Do councillors understand, well, in your view, do they understand that they may be making a decision between competing priorities?
I do think that that's certainly, the understanding of that's grown a lot in the last five to seven years perhaps. I think there's a very clear understanding generally, that yes, we might want to spend a million over here, but we're not going to be able to do something else, so how do we slice and dice the tight bucket of money that we've got to do that? Having said that, there are still decisions that can be made, that you don't necessarily have the ability to fund.
Are there processes that exist, and what process are there that exist to ensure that councils don't exceed their budget in a given year?
You know, maybe some of the other gurus on this panel can answer that one, but I don't think there's any processes in place that I could point to that say, "This is why and how you should not do that," if that makes sense. We've got reserves, we have cash reserves, we've got a million things, Richard and David can talk to that. We've got lots of different pockets of cash that are only able to be used for certain things, they're all tied, very much all tied to various uses, and that often builds a picture that, "Well, we're very healthy financially, look at all this that we've got," yes, but we can only spend that much of it on discretionary as opposed to what's sitting in various reserves, et cetera. But, look, to be truly honest, outside of the ratios that we all do have to report on quarterly and then annually, which the Office of Local Government clearly are watching reasonably closely, there's not a whole heap of process that I could point to, I don't know if David or Richard can do so.
Look, I'll just jump in, I think that at Georges River, we do a really good job with our quarterly reviews, we highlight the councillors, where there's been issues and the reasons for those issues, it could be, you know, it could be weather conditions that have pushed the project out, which has created an extra cost, it could be a rise in raw materials, there's a number of things that the cost could have increased by because of whatever reasons. But, and our quarterly reviews, you know, they're quite extensive, we have a briefing to explain to councillors the areas that might be of interest to them, and we show the outcome of the budget, the way it's moving, and what we can do to curb that expense if we need to. We also got to remember too, that we have a 10-year long-term financial plan, and just on that, if we could stick to that 10-year long-term financial plan, we'd be good for 10 years. But unfortunately, there are times when people or councillors and officers want things to be done outside that 10-year long-term financial plan, and we run the rule that if you put something in, you've got to take something out, and that's the rule that we try to abide by. It doesn't always work, it causes some confusion at times and a little bit of angst, but that's what we try to work to, and we remind our councillors of that quite regularly.
Interesting, thanks.
Through Chair, yeah, I was just going to cover some of the technical applications, so under the Local Government Act, we've got sections for councils that are accountable for the financial, the business, we've got regulations around authorisation, so council can only spend up to the amount that they've voted in the budget for that year, so if it's going to go overall, has to change, they then have to go back to council to get that renominated, and the quarterly review is the perfect place for that, so there are fairly strong rules around going over budget in terms of that transparency, and we quite often, and it's hard to track sometimes, but we do make sure that anything which is going to exceed the budget, it certainly has to then go back to council, and then they can make a decision whether they have to then delay a further capital works programme another year or two years, because we've spent all the money on this one, and we had a lot of troubles during the high inflation period with a lot of those projects, because we had to start deferring things, but at least it's been transparent in the community, at least understanding the reasons why.
Can I ask maybe?
Sure, sorry, just before.
Can I ask, you casually alluded to the rate peg, I'll leave that one to side at the moment, but in terms of revenue to councils, what potential sources of revenue such as charges and levies aren't actually pegged? I mean, what charges and levies could councils use, and do councils use, that aren't pegged? And which are the key charges and levies that are pegged in some way? Can you just elucidate on that if you would?
Okay. I think, yeah, so we've got our rates, and we've got our land rates, which obviously are pegged, we've got our waste charges, which are linked to the reasonable cost of delivering waste, so they're not technically pegged, but they're obviously linked to the cost of delivering that service, and that's regulated. And then we have our user fees and charges, which then get adopted by council every year. Technically, outside of the statutory fees, like the DAs and the stormwater and a few things which are linked to a statutory setting, council can set increased fees through user fees and charges, but the reality is that a lot of those things are using community facilities, soccer fields, buildings of council, and the community can't really afford aquatic centres, they can't afford to pay the full cost of what that service is, so council always has to need to subsidise. We do have a setting that we can set rates at a market rate for things which we consider as commercial services, but generally, most things in our realm are done on a pricing policy which is less than cost, either marginally less than cost or significantly less than cost. So that's where we, we have the ability to set high fees, but it's the ability to pay for the community to use our facilities that becomes restricted, and things like property and parking, I guess, are unrestricted, but that just comes down to, you know, a big capital investment in terms of those things, so they're our main sources of revenue.
Could I ask about something like, for example, emergency services? In terms of the emergency services, obviously subsidies and other resources are provided by other levels of government, councils are also expected to provide that. Is that, for instance, an emergency services levy? If a council wished to put an emergency services levy on to increase the resources available and the training and facilities available to its various emergency services, whatever they may be, be it for flood or fire or whatever, is that restricted in any way by any legislation?
I think that's a hard one.
I can quote you a few examples of where it has been used, but not for many decades, I'm just curious as to what it is now.
We certainly don't, as local government in New South Wales, have the ability just to apply a levy because it's a good idea. We would have done it. We would need to apply through the appropriate channels, Ipart or whomever, that's a bit of a complex one actually, because we're already in the middle of an emergency services levy regime.
I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, but, yeah, we would need to apply if we were going to do something different like that as a permanent levy, I would be my initial response.
May I ask, Chair, that, if you would, because it's a question that's been on my mind for a while, if you could possibly just take that on notice, I'd be interested in what the legislative and other restrictions are, and maybe if there are any examples where councils might be doing that, and it doesn't only have to be emergency services, I mean, what discretionary fundraising is available to local government, I guess is the question, and how would that be operationalised?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks. I'll throw now to Dr Mandacon.
Thank you. Thanks so much for being here today. I have a question arising from your written submission, you talked about the rate peg overlooking the opportunity to keep pace with land value. I'm interested, is the solution to that problem just removing the rate peg, or do we need to be looking at other additional measures to capture that increase in land value?
Yeah, it's an interesting point, because, you know, when we looked at this, land values have gone up 140% over the last 10 years, and rates have gone up 25%, and I think a lot of people get quite confused by this fact, that they think if land's going up, council will get more rates, council only get more rates by the rate peg, so, but we provide a lot of community services where we have to buy land or we own land, so the actual cost for us to acquire land for open space becomes quite restrictive, so the developer contribution plans, obviously then will take a bit of a hammering if land values are going up significantly, so we see it as a loss of capture, where we could potentially get, if we were giving more credit for the increase in land value, on top of the rate peg, then that would actually provide an extra source of income, but it doesn't do what people think it does, and it gets confused as rate pays, because they get an annual letter from the valuers every year saying the land value's gone up, and then they panic, and they find out the rates don't go up as much, so it's, it is a very confusing system, whereas if it was a stamp duty system, obviously they would, they would get the full benefit of those, that land value increase.
Are we adequately capturing the benefits of development through the current developer contribution?
That is a challenge too, not in the subject of this review, but yeah, there is a cap from Ipart of that, and then councils then have to make a further application to increase that, so I hear councils like the Hills talk about it all the time, where they've got to build massive areas and they have to continually go back to I, to get approval, and if they don't get approval in time, then they can't collect the money and they miss the boat, so yeah, it is, it is a hard thing. And the other thing we always argue for is that the developer contributions obviously can increase the size of a building, but not necessarily have enough money to replace the whole building, so the uplift in depreciation, uplift in maintenance cost is not covered by developer contributions, and it's assumed that the rate is then have to cover those additional costs that will stem out from that, and as we go through this argument around further density, we find that the more dense a population is, the more need for services, because they've got less open space, they need more computers, they need more libraries, so yeah, it's a difficult time for councils as population and density grows, we find those costs do significantly increase.
Can I just add to that?
Please.
Just adding to that, the biggest issue I think that we have is the maintenance component. You know, the way that you can bring your budget into check is by cutting your maintenance, and that's a no-no, really, but really, sometimes you're left with no other choice, because you've got to do that, and then when the next year comes, you've got to pay double of what you're going to pay the previous year for the maintenance, so it is a practice that we shouldn't get into, but sometimes it's a practice that we are led down the path of, because we're trying to balance our operating budget, but it's something that we certainly need to keep an eye on and make sure that the maintenance upkeep of our buildings, roads, and every other part of our infrastructure items are maintained at an acceptable level.
You also mentioned earlier the statutory fees that don't align with CPI or the cost of providing those services, I'm interested in understanding that in more detail, we've also had other submissions that mention those fees, have you got a list of them? Have you got data to support that they're not keeping up with the costs of providing those services, or case studies or anecdotes of that impact?
Yeah, Danny, the first one I can think of is obviously, when we're talking about this yesterday, the stormwater fee has been set at $25 forever, and I think now our equivalent at the water would charge four times what we're charging for that access to stormwater fee, but there is a whole list of statutory fees, we had issues with development application fees for a lot of years, they were just stagnant, they didn't go up at all, and now they've started to increase now, but we've got, similar to what Ipart was saying, we've got this massive catch-up, so most councils, their development services, we're probably subsidised, the rate pays are probably subsidising it in our council up to $5 million, just to run development services at the moment, because of that huge catch-up, so, but yeah, we can definitely get a full list of all those fees, and the other one that we particularly talk a lot about in the affordability to pay is the pot pension and rebate, which has been $250 since 1989, but obviously, we can't afford to increase it, and I don't think the state want to increase it, because it's going to cost a lot more in terms of the rebate, so, things like that, but at the moment, we're getting a lot of rate, pensioners who are now falling into our unpaid list, and that's an intergenerational problem, because if they don't pay those rates, then it's going to pass on to the property when they pass it down to the next generation, so things like that, where you think it'd be sensible to provide that subsidy to pensioners, but every year it's getting less and less for them, because it hasn't had the increase in 30 years.
Thank you. Those are both excellent examples, and I'm just hitting any more that you can provide us on notice, and I had one more question, if that's all right, Chair. You also mentioned in your answer to an earlier question, the ratios that you're required to report on to the Office of Local Government, I'm interested in your perspective on those ratios, are they actually supporting councils to implement sound practices, or is that having unintended consequences?
I can answer, but maybe the finance guru should.
Okay. We were watching very closely at another jurisdiction recently, they put in performance ratios which are relevant to the local government area, so they had eight different areas, they identified eight different things, so one of the big issues with the performance ratio, if I represent the whole of council, out of New South Wales, is you can't have one-size-fits-all. There's no way that a far western New South Wales council is going to comply with those ratios, it's near impossible. The other part of the ratios, which we talked about at our finance conference this year, is 50% of them were set up as a banking, encouraging us to borrow more money, so they're debt, they're debt-related ratios, and they have no real impact for council, we don't really understand, and we don't know what we report on them, they don't do a lot, but there are a couple of good things around operating performance ratio and own source revenue, and rates outstanding, I think were probably the three that we probably gave, "Well, they, they make sense." The only problem with the performance ratio at the moment is we have a very bumpy calculation that we have to redesign our financial statements just to fit into the formula, because we include capital income in our operating P&amp;L, and it just confuses a lot of people, so there's some work which has been going on for several years at the OGG to try and recapture that and re-present to councils some performance ratios that may make more sense. I'm a fan for a financial sustainability scorecard, which, you know, would be consistent and the councils could report against, but yeah, it's an ongoing process to try and get that improved.
Thanks.
Thanks, Chair. I'm just looking at whether the Honourable Scott Farlow or Sam Faraway had any questions?
Look, my question is just around grants revenue effectively, and how much councils are reliant on grants revenue, and how that is such bumpy revenue, and what you see that we could potentially do on that front to make it more consistent.
Well, I'll start. We love grants, that's the first thing I'd say, and keep them coming, would be my question, my statement, but I think they are a double-edged sword, and I'm ignoring federal assistance grants here for the moment, which are untied, and we can do broadly what we will with them. The grants situation, and it always comes up as the alternate side to cost shifting when we have that conversation, but grants are great, but they do impose, as David has said a little earlier, great maintenance burdens potentially on a council, so whilst you might need to build that widget for $3 million and you've got a grant to do it, firstly, you may have had to shift other priorities, because there's never an alignment, which is what it is, but that is the truth, we may have had to go 50/50 potentially with the state to get that funding, which may have shifted other priorities, and then we built the widget, and we now then have to maintain, and there's no additional monies to actually maintain, so whilst it is fabulously good to have new infrastructure around the place, there is this ongoing burden that does sit on council that we then have to try and manage in the constraints of the financials that we've currently got. So I think- So I think we don't necessar-, well, I can only really speak for Walarra, but we don't necessarily bank on, for want of a better term, a certain amount of grants every year. We know the federal assistance grants are going to come in broadly, whatever they come in at. But there's not much guarantee because it's generally all competitive with the other grants that come in. So we certainly all apply as we can for grants. Other councils may have slightly different approaches. Ironically, the cost to apply and manage and maintain grant processes is really high and complex for some councils. And it gets back to that scale issue of you're a large, medium, small, rural, regional, metro. There's all those issues that come into it. And I would suspect that, or no, rural and regional councils rely much more heavily on grants than we obviously do in the metropolitan area.
Thanks. I know the Honourable Emma Hurst had a question. Yeah, throw to you now.
Great, thank you. And I'm sorry, I hope this question wasn't asked while I was out of the room. But I did notice in your submission around cost shifting and the significant and detrimental impact on local government service delivery and financial sustainability. I'm just wondering if you can give any sort of real-life examples of cost shifting that's occurred, which the rate peg is not actually adjusted for?
Yep. So I think we talked about DA fees before in terms of passing that burden. The other one, we deliver the food inspection services, which was obviously given to us from another authority. And councils is also capped in terms of what they can charge for that service. So quite often we run at a fairly large loss to maintain. And obviously it's a very important service because people don't want to sit in restaurants without having the accreditation on the door. So it's an essential service for the community, but it's not something we can fully recover the cost of. And the other one, which I think is the biggest one, biggest elephant in the room for us in the next 10 years, is going to be the EPA levy. Now, this is significant amounts, I think I've heard up to $5 million is collected through the rate costs. The idea was to then reinvest into ways of us tipping waste in the future. And during the yellow bin crisis and now finding new sites for tipping councils' waste in the future, we haven't seen a lot of investment in this space. So there's going to be a lot of problems in the future for councils unless we can actually get that investment going into that waste. And that potentially, because the way it's structured, the rate payer will have to pay for any under-investment. And that obviously then takes away council's ability to generate rates and collect and fund our services. So that's obviously an evolving concern for us as well.
If I can just add to that too, it just so happens that I have a copy of a mere or minute that was presented to council on the 26th of February from our mayor about that subject of cost shifting. And we estimated that cost shifting has added an excess 320 to 350 per rate payer annually. And trends have highlighted an ongoing annual increase. So that's what we're looking at. And some of the areas, we're talking about emergency services contributions, we're talking about rate exemptions, we're talking about waste levies, library funding, shortfalls, companion animals, contaminated land management, protection of the environment operations and noxious weeds and development applications. And that was, as I say, presented to our council. And the motion was that we note that and that we write to the Premier of New South Wales and Minister for Local Government regarding these matters.
Are you comfortable to table that mere or minute?
Absolutely. It's a public document.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. I've also, your submission's very critical, obviously, of the current rate peg methodology. I just wanted to hear from you in regards to what sort of recommendations that you would like to see from this inquiry? What would be your sort of main goals and hoping to see in the report when it comes through?
Okay. Yeah, I think it was critical of the rate peg, but I think it was the alternative solution that we're providing. So as you know, we're about to go into our four-year election cycle. So we're going to refresh all our documents with our new council when they come back on board. So using the IPNR process, we see there's two problems. We've got a statutory setting problem where, you know, we can't raise certain income. But we've also got this wonderful process called IPNR where we sit down with our community and we talk about the services, we talk about the costs, but we can't talk about the rates. And it just feels like that's a cost that council's already funding. It won't cost us any more money if we just roll out through the IPNR process and actually ask the community and consult with the community about increasing our rates in that forum. Obviously, we can't with the current rate pegging system. So I guess there's been many other solutions looked at. Whether councils who are performing well, financial sustainable, should they then be allowed to ask for an extra 1% or 2% increase to fund services that the community really, really want from us? And gets us away with that whole rates rubbish, you know, argument. And we can actually then meet the community needs, but we can also provide the rates to deliver the services they want. So that's the big part of our submission is that, and we have an IPNR working group under the local government professionals as well. And they talk about this stuff a lot. And the visibility and the transparency to the community and the councillors is really strong through this process. And it's not going to cost us any more to run that process. So we think that's a really good solution.
If I could, I think the gut reaction is let's just scrap the rate peg because that sounds like a great idea for a whole heap of reasons. But it's never going to be that simple politically and or otherwise. So realistically, something like the rate peg is likely to remain. But getting to Richard's point, is there something that can be in place where if you are meeting certain, going back to ratios and benchmarks, et cetera? If you are, as your council, meeting those certain benchmarks, do you have the ability or could you have the ability then to increase it? Let's pick a number, 2% above whatever the rate peg is set at and however that's calculated, to allow you to do certain things? Again, as Richard has said, wholly accountable to the community through our IPNR process as to what that would look like. And then clearly through the elected councillors as to whether they're comfortable doing so. But I think we were only just talking earlier, having a rate peg and a rate cap does at least let you know how much your income is going to increase by every year. It's just simply that it's never been enough. And I guess getting to your point about recommendations, it's slightly off-topic. But I think one of the key things that we really want as a local government sector is to have an adult conversation with the state about this issue. Because for 20-plus years, we've had review after review, recommendations after recommendations that sit in the cupboard and maybe looked at once or twice. Some of these submissions do a great job in digging up some of the past, but there's still issues we're dealing with today. So we really need to be able to have a conversation about things like the rate peg, things like cost shifting, things like grants, without any politics in it and without any emotion that just says this is the reality of this sector of local government. And how can we partner with the state to actually be far more effective in delivering for the community? And that's not something that we've really had access to before.
Thank you.
Thanks. Just handing over to the Honourable Peter Primrose for a question.
Two questions. One's a formula and the other one's totally speculative. The formula one first is just following on from one of your earlier responses. I don't know what it's called in local government anymore, but in health it was RMR, routine maintenance and repairs, which you referred to. You mentioned that the dangers of allowing that to slip because you never ever catch up and things start to fall to pieces. Is there a formula that's recommended for local councils to include as a percentage of their revenue in RMR? Is there, and please take this on notice if you wish. Does someone in, say, the Office of Local Government or someone else, collect that percentage? Is there an opportunity to see where that's going over time in relation to local councils?
I think, yeah, we have a process and it's famously called the Special Schedule VII, which is our report on our assets. So in that report, it requires council to determine through the asset management programme what the required level of maintenance is. And then council has to then expand 100% of that as a ratio. It's not audited and the auditors will give long reasons why. And I guess it is a little bit speculative, so it's very hard for them to document it. But that's the current process. And obviously then we also report against the asset backlog, which also is not audited. But that's the attempt for us to make sure that, because a council that gets in trouble will often, you know, take away asset renewal and take away asset maintenance as a first. But obviously when you manage roads and stormwater, you can't afford to, because, you know, the condition of those assets deteriorates so quickly that, you know, then there's asset groups that will give you a curve that once you get to, you know, the mid-condition and after that, the cost triples for council. So you end up in that debt spiral or that, you know, cost spiral if you don't maintain it properly. So that's the reason why we kind of monitor that fairly closely.
Is that reported or the data accumulated across local councils somewhere that we could have a look at?
Yeah, there's an engineering group that do the whole of council. I don't know if they get all councils, but I know there's definitely, I've seen reports where there's seven or 80 councils that all contribute to it. And so, yeah, there are some. Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
They would have data. They have very good data on that stuff.
Thank you. We might take that up. My other final question, totally speculative. In terms of what we're hearing about the number of zombie DAs being reactivated at the moment, in terms of being conditioned up, are those old conditions affecting in any way costs onto councils? Or is it totally negligible? I'm thinking of if conditions are based upon DAs that are 20 years old, then obviously in terms of obligations on the applicants, it may not meet the current requirements, which may then fall onto local councils. Or is that just not really an issue in terms of the numbers? And again, please feel free to take it on notice if you wish.
Yeah, I think we take that on notice. It's not something that's come to my attention in Walarra or David. We'll take it on notice.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks so much. Just in the two minutes we have left, I just wanted to ask quickly about outsourcing, if I can, just with the view of looking at it through the lens of a sustainability issue. Because we've seen that that's become a bit of a knock-on effect of some of the financial sustainability travels. Do you lose skills in-house by outsourcing services?
I'll answer that one for George's River Council. Yes, I'm a firm believer that you do. And we try and not outsource for the reasons that we do not want to lose that skill base within our workforce.
And does it end up being more expensive in the long run, would you say, when and if that does happen? Because you say you try not to, but.
Well, when you train your staff up to be at a certain level, you put a lot of investment into those guys and you don't want to see them walk out of the organisation to go somewhere else. And then to get someone else in, it means that you have to retrain and all those things. So outsourcing, there's no retraining that's needed. But there's still that loss of skills and the skill base within your organisation. You know, you want a highly skilled workforce, which can, I guess, counter any issues that you might have. So as I say, I'm a supporter of having the skills in-house as opposed to out-house. But there are some that you do still have to outsource. You know, it might be a capital works programme where you've got too many capital works programmes on your plate and you need a project manager for a specific one. It doesn't mean that you haven't got the skilled staff, but you just haven't got that many staff. So you need to bring someone in for that. So there are circumstances when you do bring someone in, but it's only for a specific project.
Thank you. Thanks so much for making time to give evidence today. The secretary will be in touch with questions on notice that you've taken. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to our next witnesses. And thank you so much for giving time to give evidence to this important inquiry. If I could ask you to start from my left, just with your name, position, title and swearing either the oath or the affirmation.
My name is Ian Clayton. I'm the Manager of Revenue and Property at Midwestern Regional Council and Vice President of the New South Wales Revenue Professionals. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
So my name's Andrew Butcher and I'm the Senior Revenue Accountant at Campbelltown City Council. And I am currently the President of the New South Wales Revenue Professionals. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Would you like to start by making a short opening statement?
Yeah, certainly. So we're here on behalf of the New South Wales Revenue Professionals, which is a group that I'm extremely proud of being the president for. So the group is a self-funded organisation established to promote best practice, conduct training and run annual conference for rating and revenue raising practitioners in New South Wales. We're made up of around 200 members with access provided to all 128 New South Wales councils. And our executive committee consists of four metropolitan representatives, of which I am one, and five regional council members, of which Ian is one of those. We've been active for nearly 30 years and successfully run 26 consecutive conferences for our members. Our focus is on collaborating and advocacy with various state government and government key stakeholders, LG or Local Government, New South Wales, Office of Local Government, Value General. And we've had a strong engagement with Treasury and IPART. In fact, the last time that I was in this room was giving evidence to parliamentary inquiry into the fessel. So I'd like to thank the committee for the opportunity to give evidence on behalf of New South Wales Revenue Professionals. In our submission, we've covered off all seven of the items identified in the terms of reference. Primarily, our focus in this inquiry is on the IPNR reforms, funding the rate pegging legislation or rate pegging policy of government. We see the IPNR as an extremely powerful tool that could mitigate the amount of rate pegging and involve the community more so in the decision-making of councils. We understand, we believe that it's underutilised and, you know, the greater emphasis needs to be placed on the community engagement during the CSP and the resourcing strategy. And we've also included a reference to CIV as being the recommended basis of all rates and taxes in New South Wales. There's a number of reasons for that and if we had the opportunity, we might go into that depending on the questions from the committee. But CIV certainly has some opportunities to create uplift. It was mentioned with the previous witnesses about value capture. And there is, you know, it's used around the world, value capture and it's something that could be utilised with the use of CIV. The IPART also recommended a process of capturing uplift from vacant land or an occupied land to utilise land or built land and a growth factor that would be included in that. And that was something that we saw some value in. So CIV, and at the moment, as you would most likely all be aware of, the Treasury's consultation paper on the potential. fund. And I can give an example of that in that we're seeing a lot of charities or public benevolent institutions which not, not, not mentioning anything about the work that they do. And we all know that they do great work in our communities, that will be buy, or that buy or have the capacity now to buy or to fund significant infrastructure in our community. And that significant infrastructure may involve many, or up to a thousand or more apartments that are used by people that are not maybe as privileged as others. Those people that live there will use council resources. And the point being that they're not, there's no payment for that to the council. So the council misses out on income for that. Now the way in which the process works, which is quite technical, and if you, if you really want to know it, I can get into the detail, but the, the process is quite technical. That cost is a loss to the council in the year that it is incurred. And then it's a burden to the community for every year thereafter. So it is not a direct cost shift or not a cost shift that has ever been particularly identified in that way, but a council that loses a hundred thousand dollars in rate income on a particular development will then shift that on to all the rest of the rate payers. And that's purely the way in which the, the statutory compliance with rate-pegging works. So we think that the government identified this issue in the original legislation, and that is why housing New South Wales pays the same amount as everybody else in land rates. So affordable housing, which we all know is topical, and we're not trying to move away from, from that. But housing New South Wales pays the council land rates just like anybody else. But a public benevolent institution that is running a social housing network is actually exempt from paying council rates. Now, take away the cost implications, there's also, that doesn't make sense to us from, oh, can't think of the word now, but, so in the way in which it's applied. So from a principles, from a principal basis. In a street, you may have, you know, a number of houses. One of them is occupied by Mr. and Mrs. Struggle Street. They pay land rates. The second house may be owned by a private investor. Their tenants paying all the time on, on time suddenly fall on hard times and can't, have fallen behind in their rent. The owner finds out that this is the situation. So they say, well, look, I'll reduce your rent for a period of time. Very benevolent. They still pay the rates. Then the third property may be Housing Commission. Housing pays the rates. And on the fourth house is a public benevolent institution who the property is occupied by maybe people with the same social or financial impacts as the other three, but they don't pay any rates to the council. And the people that live there are using the same services. Now, we get, we get the reason why state and federal governments have exemptions, because you're probably funding them through your, through your alignment with the legislation. So, you know, state and federal has social responsibilities that the council doesn't. The council's responsibility is to provide those services. If the public benevolent institution were maintaining the roads or mowing the parks or, you know, providing the services that we provide, then those exemptions would make sense because they would align. Also, an exemption is not necessarily foreseeable by a local council. So for example, a developer, private developer builds a multi-story development. It's rated by the council before it becomes occupied or at any stage. It's bought, purchased by a public benevolent institution. And we don't see that coming. And that has a direct impact on our budget because there's an exemption on the cost. So for that reason as well. So primarily there, if it's okay with you, Ian might have to, might have some areas to elaborate from a, more of a regional perspective on top of that.
If we can just keep it brief, then we'll move to questions, Ian. But sure, yep.
Yeah, well, I'm happy to just to go with the questions.
Yep, beautiful.
If you'd move on, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks so much for your opening remarks. I'm just looking at my colleagues. Dr. Amanda Conne.
Thank you so much for the, the information you've already given us. I was hoping to pick up on what you were talking about in terms of the SIV, which, you know, various bodies have recommended at various points in time. Particularly in your written submission, you talked about not just the sort of efficiency and the understandability of moving to SIV, but about the immediate effect of it. And I was hoping you could explain that in more detail in terms of the time lag between subdivisions and rate income and what difference moving to the SIV would make.
Yeah, I can have a crack at that. So when a subdivision occurs, there is an uplift in, in the overall value. So if you've got a parcel of land that's divided into four, even on unimproved land values, there is usually the, the sum of the four individual values will be higher than the original one. So there, there is an uplift in rates at that point. So the advantage of CIV would be then, at some point when those places are developed, so they, they start building houses on them, there'll be a further uplift in, in the value. And the, the original IPART recommendations around population increases was allowing that capture to occur. So the CIV will, would have significant second uplift in, in ratable value and, and within, within what would be the cap. So there's, that's really, I think, where the, where the advantage comes.
And I also wanted to ask, you outlined in a lot of detail the impact of the rate exemptions. And if we were looking to make recommendations about changing those exemptions, is it as simple as calculating exemptions based on, you know, use rather than ownership? Or is it more complicated than that? What factors should we be taking into account in, in recommending any changes in that space?
We've long held the view that any land that is occupied or used for residential purposes should, should be, should not be eligible for an exemption. So because the people that live in those properties, whether they own them or, or they're, they're rented, will be using the services that primarily local government provides. So that part is not about the cost impact. It's more about the social equity in that everybody in that street contributes one way or another towards the, the land rates that the council uses to fund the services, work services, activities, and facilities that are provided. Yeah. To, yeah, so that would be number one, simple as, any land that is used for residential accommodation. And the other one is for commercial benefit. Now, it'd be a little bit more difficult, but say, for example, a large public benevolent institution that owns a building that they lease out, then that, they wouldn't be able to, to get an exemption from that. I think so, yep.
Thanks, Chair. Thanks. Honorable Scott Fowler?
Thank you very much. Talking about exemptions, you outlined in your submission as well about build-to-rent. It's not necessarily an exemption, but it's a change in, in rating, so to speak. And I think you and I have seen figures from RIDE council as well that have put it at about a half a million dollar impact when it comes to build-to-rent compared to a normal strata complex. Can you just outline why that's the case and what you would see as a potential change that the government could make to address that shortfall?
Certainly. So it's a good, good question. The build-to-rent is emerging. It's new. And, and it, from a conceptual point of view, it's a great concept. However, it does have those impacts on, on councils' rates. The reason for that is that we're using unimproved land value. So the site and RIDE, as you mentioned, is a great example. And I'm pretty familiar with the RIDE situation. Multiple buildings, towers on that site. The land value may only be set at so many millions of dollars. The council land rates will be based on that single land value when it's built to rent. On that site will be anything up to, I think, six hundred units, I think, for that development. So there's a minimum of six hundred individuals that are going to be tapping into council services. Parking, using the roads, the parks. And particularly densification causes the need for more parks to be provided, maintained. But the contribution will only be one amount of rates on the unimproved land value. If it were a strata or subdivided into a strata, we would have six hundred different people contributing towards the rates. And each of those people would possibly, depending on the rating structure the council determined, contribute up to about forty-five, fifty percent more in, in land rates per tower than just the single, the single site. Now, you said.
That's because you've effectively got the floor in place as well. Is that, is that the reason or?
The floor in place.
Well, in term, I, I guess in the sense of you pay individual fees for rubbish collection or.
Well, that too. So that's a knock-on effect. But the knock-on effect is that legislation requires council can only levy one annual domestic waste management charge per ratable parcel. So when it's a strata, there's your six hundred individual ratable parcels as opposed to one. So that causes another, a knock-on effect from, from that. To fix it, there's a number of opportunities. I mean, it could well be as simple as an amendment to regulation, which is the simplest fix, to restrict the categorisation for rating purposes to be business for those properties. Because essentially, a developer is operating business.
Yep.
Doesn't impact on the individuals. So the affordable housing situation remains the same. Will be a problem if it's owned by a public benevolent institution because it'd be exempt from rates altogether. But yeah.
Okay. Perhaps another fix too may be in the way that that parcel is valued. So if the Valuation of Land Act allowed each of those units to be separately valued, that may have a similar effect to what it would be if it was stratted in terms of rates.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thanks. The Honourable Emma Hurst?
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. And thank you both for coming in today. Your submission raised concern that the rate pegs not kept pace with the increased costs. And obviously, that's something we're talking a lot about in this inquiry. And you talk about obviously that backlog in infrastructure and high deficits for some councils. I'm just wondering, you know, what needs to actually happen to ensure that councils that have historically not had enough funding can actually catch up in those spaces? And I'm particularly keen to hear about, you know, that regional perspective as well and, and what needs to happen there.
Yeah, I think, I think with some smaller regional councils, particularly with small populations in large areas, the, it, it probably is questionable whether, whether rates and the rate peg can fix a lot of those things. Because the capacity of the, the residents to pay the rates may not, simply may not be there. So it's, it's, it's a really challenging scenario for, for, for some of those regions. Perhaps for, for councils more like ourselves, as Andrew mentioned, we, we probably see that there is a greater role for the IPNR process to set the rates. It's, it's extremely good at setting the wants and desires of the communities. But at the end of the day, currently, they have to be squashed down to fit the revenue. So if, if the revenue was part of that conversation early on, then, then that, that could see some real advantages. But yeah, the answer for some, for some individual councils is not so simple.
Mr. Butcher, did you have anything to add to that one or?
No, not at all. I think Ian's answered that.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks so much. I might continue on with a couple of questions about capital improved value, if I can. And thank you so much for your submission, which was very detailed. It was a very interesting read. We heard from the Value General in our first hearing, who talked about the transition to a capital improved value system. And they stated it would cost five hundred million dollars and take five years. You also talk in your submission at length and have spoken today about the benefits of moving to a capital improved value system over the status quo. Do you, I'm just interested to, to get your thoughts on whether the transition would be as expensive as that you would think.
That's a, yeah, very good question. We don't, we don't know. But we have been involved in a number of discussions with the Value General. We work closely with them on this, on this point. And there was also the IPART review into rating from, what year was that? Two thousand and sixteen, I think it was. It was tabled?
It's been a few, yep.
Yeah. Was it December? Yeah. That went into a lot of detail in the transition to CIV. And from my memory, one of the, one of the options or the trans, the transition that did occur, which was kind of comical at the time, but it made a lot of sense, was that the Irish government, they wrote to, sent a letter out to all of their landowners and said, tell us what your land is worth. And yeah, I know, that's, but when you think about it, it actually makes a lot of sense. Because I doubt whether anybody in this room who owns property would not have an idea as to what it's worth. And even if everybody undervalued their land by twenty-five percent, thinking, well, if I put a lower figure, I'm not going to pay as much taxes, then the same effect will occur overall. But I'm not suggesting that is the only way in which it can be done. But it is a good start and that would reduce the cost. Now, the Value General should have a lot of information on sold land. Because particularly metropolitan councils, the regional councils less so, and Ian might want to talk to that. But most land in metropolitan Sydney or properties that are sold, have got a house on them. And if they don't, then you know what the vacant, any land that is vacant, you know what it has sold for anyway. So there's a lot of data around that. And it's a lot better data. I mean, in the area that I grew up, there is no, there'll be no vacant land there at the moment. Like, it's all built. So every sale that occurs there is capital improved value.
Did you have anything to add?
Yeah, I, I'd suggest that there would be some challenges in, in creating the database for the Value General to know what each property is. And keeping that going forward as well. Many times gone by, development applications and inspections and that type of thing went all through councils. But that doesn't necessarily happen now with private certifiers. And so a lot of the time, council doesn't even know whether a building is complete or not and occupied. So in, in regional areas, some council, councils, metropolitan councils will have different.
But it is a good start and that would reduce the cost. Now, the valuer general should have a lot of information on sold land because particularly metropolitan councils, the regional councils less so, and Ian might want to talk to that. But most land in metropolitan Sydney or properties that are sold have got a house on them. And if they don't, then you know what the vacant, any land that is vacant, you know what it has sold for anyway. So there's a lot of data around that, and it's a lot better data. I mean, in the area that I grew up, there is no, there'll be no vacant land there at the moment. Like, it's all built, so every sale that occurs there is capital improved value.
Did you have anything to add?
Yeah, I'd suggest that there would be some challenges in creating the database for the valuer general to know what each property is, and keeping that going forward as well. Many times gone by, development applications and inspections and that type of thing went all through councils, but that doesn't necessarily happen now with private certifiers. And so a lot of the time, council doesn't even know whether a building is complete or not and occupied. So in regional areas, some council councils, metropolitan councils will have different systems and may know better. So there would be some challenges, I can see, in that, which I'm sure the valuer general has passed on as well. In terms of, a lot of the state is vacant farmland, once you get out over the other side of the great divide, so. And a lot of that land isn't transacted all that regularly. But I'd imagine on a broad scale, it may not be a massive a massive task for the valuer general to come up with a process to handle those.
Thank you. I might ask now just a few questions about rates increases and revenue. What's the general shortfall in revenue between what you have and what you would like to have?
That's a very, yeah, very good, open question. So again, I'll go back to, well, I-PART actually discussed this point in the rate peg methodology response or their paper on. And they identified that, and this has been my experience, and I've worked in a number of councils, is that the councils will determine first what their income is and then work backwards from that. So we know that the rate peg is going to be X amount for a particular year, and that gives us this much revenue. And so then we'll work within that expenditure frame. Now, that's also a requirement under the Local Government Act, so I think it's section eight of the Local Government Act that requires councils to operate a balanced budget, so they operate within their means and also include, you know, responsible accounting practices for intergenerational equity as well. So what is needed and what is, it's a very, very difficult question to answer because every council will be different. And as the gentleman that we heard previously mentioned, that back in 2019, we had the floods, a lot of rain. And our council, where I work now, was particularly impacted with mowing. And so there had to be a shift in the way in which the money is spent. And then that means that a project that was going to happen in the current year would be moved to another year and so on. So it's a bit difficult, isn't it?
Yeah, I think the answer is that there'll be massive variations between each council. But I guess that's, going back to the IPNR process, that's where that can be identified because the community is telling council what they want. And whatever that adds up to, if the council was of a mind to provide all of those services and facilities, then this is how much revenue there would be. And so I suppose the gap is what the rate peg is now to where that is. So, yeah, it's...
Can I just ask a follow-up to that? Just say, this is, like, this is the crux of the issue, right? So you've just outlined for us, what is the statutory requirement for councils' provision of services? Is this laid down anywhere in writing in legislation or regulation? Like, what actually are you obliged by law to provide?
It is, but it's fairly broad. I can't remember the section of the act it's in, but it's in the Local Government Act and it's fairly early on. It identifies what councils' functions are. And that is reasonably broad. And I think there's about, from memory, it's probably about six tiers to what those functions are.
So is it not possible to accurately model those functions and their cost based on the data that you've got, given that councils have been doing this since Adam was a boy? And then say, "This is our cost base, based on what we're required to do, therefore we need X amount of revenue. The rate peg will or will not do that." And then, so anything above that requires a special rate varie-, it's essentially, that is the theory of the current system, right?
Yes.
So why is that deficient?
Yeah, well, as mentioned by our previous colleagues, there's a political appetite for applying for a special variation. Also, the council's own appetite to apply for a special variation on the back of the cost and the view that the community takes on a special variation. So I have been involved in a number of special variations myself, I think Ian probably...
No, I haven't.
Sorry, Ian hasn't. But I have been involved in that process. And once you put in front of the community that, you know, the council is proposing to increase rates by a certain percentage, say five or six percent over the cap, so you may be looking at eight percent, say, it's an immediate backlash over the cost. It's not ever, or very rarely, is it about what I'm going to get or what the council's going to do for me. But to that point, as we raised in here in our submission, the IPNR process should be relied upon a lot more. And there needs to be greater flexibility in those increases with less of a cost implication on the application. So going through the I-PART application for a special variation is quite intensive, but it also replicates what we're doing in IPNR. So if council wants to apply for a special variation, I've already been out to the community with my CSP. I've already got a resourcing strategy, I've already got all these things in place. However, because we've now found that assets may not be at the level they need to be, need to spend more money on that, or we've built a new facility that is now costing a lot more than it was anticipated, for whatever reason, then the council will be required to go out for a special variation to increase above the peg. So the peg, there needs to be more of a juxtaposition between the peg and IPNR. Does that make sense?
Can I just ask one? As long as you have the peg, isn't it the case that it doesn't matter whether you're based, your calculations on unimproved capital value or some formula of improved capital value? Because either way, it still has to make up only to a particular increase, a percentage. Is that the case?
That is correct.
Okay.
Well, it could depend though on how, if there was CIV, as I said earlier, if you get that second uplift in value, if the peg, the pegging regime allows council to benefit from or retain the rates, their additional rates, when that second uplift happens, then it is an improvement on what happens currently.
So is that the case now?
No, because without CIV, there is no second uplift.
There is no uplift, but if you change the system, which may take a number of years, or you could write a letter to everyone, as you said, and ask them to get your database right. But you're saying that there would be basically a boost of some sort if, through using improved capital value?
There certainly could be.
If that was a provision in the peg.
Absolutely, yeah.
So there is growth at the moment in, like Ian was saying, you've got one parcel of land, maybe a large parcel of land, and council's getting, say, $5,000 in rates on that parcel. If that's subdivided during the year into 20 smaller lots, then the growth is taken into account. And the council does grow by that. But that's the one-off growth. What the I-PART recommended in the transition to CIV is that that process stays the same, but then there's a second uplift when the property's occupied. So that makes a lot of sense because vacant land would be rated at a lower amount, and you're not using the services because you're not living there. But then when you move in, you are living there.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
Thanks. In terms of the, going back to rates now, on average across councils, how much is collected in rates and how much is fees and charges, do you say?
Around 60% for these land rates, yep, and fees and charges. And then grants makes up about 11%, depending on the council. But it's higher for regional councils than metro councils.
So how much would you say rates would have to go up by to adequately fund the activities the council wants to do?
That would be individual for each council because they're not all the same. Like Campbelltown's a fringe metro, and we have growth in our area. And we're a fairly sustainable council, have, our rates are around about the midpoint for metro. And for regional councils, it varies from, like Ian mentioned before, you've got Greater Hume, you know, look at those councils out there and some of the, that have huge areas but very, very small populations. And their expenses will be totally different to ours.
Did you have anything to add?
Yeah, no, I think Andrew's 100% right, it is just so variable. And as I say, the process currently is that the wants are reduced to match the revenue. So if there was suddenly no limit whatsoever, then those list of wants might be also much higher. So it's, yeah, there's no perfect one-size-fits-all answer.
I might, just in the time we've got left, ask a couple of more questions about build to rent. Acknowledge my colleague asked that earlier, just sort of building on what he's asked. In terms of, and your submission mentions, you know, a fair bit about the build to rent scheme and how that's rated. If, am I right in thinking, so two lots are combined, 20 dwellings, say, for example, put on it, but that only gets rated as if one person owns that land and one person's living in it, is that right?
Correct.
Okay. If it's two lots, it's rated as two adjacent single-family homes, though, is that right? So if it was the two lots as they were before, they would combine and put 20 dwellings on it, that would be two single homes, also two?
So it'll depend, yeah, it'll depend how the, what the ownership is. So if they're owned by the same person, they can be aggregated into two parts, into one assessment for rating purposes. And that will cause, that would result in a reduction. But essentially, they're rated based on their unimproved land value anyway. So if one of the lots has more than, well, they're both rated as if they're owned by one person and one person lives there, whereas they're used differently to that and they have multiple people living on the property. And they can be rated separately under a strata scheme, which is essentially what the development is built for because the developer can keep it for up to 15 years before then subdividing it into a strata and selling off the units.
You talked about ways to address, you know, the build to rent issues earlier and some of the potential fixes. I'm wanting to ask about rating and how we can make, what changes we could do with rating systems to ensure that that adequately captured situations like this.
Yeah, you have a go first.
So currently, you use four separate classifications for rating, residential, farmland, business and mining. The, in our view, the business category would fairer represent the use of the land because it's owned by one person as a developer. And so therefore, it's no, if you want to make a comparison, like a hotel. So a hotel is made up of multiple apartments or sections. They're not rated individually, but the business is rated wholeless as a, under the business category. And that would go a long way to fixing the problem. It'll fix the domestic waste issue as well because its business isn't domestic waste and it's not controlled by the same rules.
Interesting. I'm just looking at my colleague, the Honourable Sam Faraway, online, just wondering if you had any questions, Sam?
No, no, I've left them to Scott for today's...
Okay, beautiful. I might just finish up with a final one. If we, so we're looking at the plan, obviously, to make Sydney denser, more multi-story buildings. How does that make the rating system in New South Wales less fair and what can we do about it?
Oh, most of all, because Metro is my area. No, it's all good. The densification is not so much of a problem because the rating structures allow for that growth. So a vacant block of land is rated as a vacant block of land. It's actually rated as business because it can't be used for residential accommodation whilst being developed. So council gets a sum of money for that. And the people that are working or building on that site are probably not using any council services like parks, gardens and everything else, driving on the roads, that's probably about it. Once the dwelling or the residential apartment is built, the property is subdivided into however many residential apartments there are. And each one of those people will contribute land rates. So that's where the growth comes in to fund the services they need. So if the council's rating structure is set correctly and set up properly, then that shouldn't be an issue for densification. Secondary dwellings, when you get out into the, into like my area, around the fringe, they represent an issue because there's two families or generally, or two lots of people living on one property. And there's an impact on the services that are required to be paid, that are required. And you've only got one rate payer, essentially. So that is an issue, but multi-story.
Sorry, I'm a bit confused because I think the Chair asked a question before about this subdivision and then multiple units being put up, but yet not being rated accordingly to the owner. But now you're saying, but now it's not...
That's build to rent though.
Oh, that's the build to rent, right.
So with build to rent, there's only one rate payer?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But there's 600 units?
So that's a fundamental flaw, right? That's got to be fixed, surely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if it's subdivided like a normal strata unit, then there'd be 600 rate notices go out.
Right, okay.
And that's where perhaps the value, the way those properties are valued may be a better solution than making it business. If there are 600 valuations for that parcel of land, then it's going to be effectively rated exactly the same as a strata.
Yeah.
So what is the improvement that you would say for that?
Well, perhaps examining the provisions of the Valuation of Land Act for that type of property to see whether, well, to have it valued that way. So rather than issuing a single assessment for the whole of the property, you issue it by the number of units, the same as it would be if it was stratted.
Thank you. Did any of my colleagues have any final questions? Thank you so much for giving evidence to the inquiry today and making the time to be here, we really appreciate it. The committee's secretariat will be in touch if there are any questions on notice also, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thanks so much to our next witness for making time to appear before this important inquiry. Could I ask you to start by giving your name, position, title and swearing either the oath or the affirmation?
My name is Sasha Thieremine. I'm currently the acting chief financial officer at the City of Ride. I swear that the evidence now about, about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you. And would you like to start by making a short opening statement?
Sure.
Thanks.
Good morning. My name is Sasha Thieremine. I'm representing the City of Ride council in my capacity as acting chief financial officer. I would like to thank the committee for the opportunity to provide evidence today regarding our submission. The city of, the city of Ride is a large metropolitan council with over a hundred and thirty residents, which is serviced by five hundred and sixty-three full-time FT staff. The population is forecasted to reach a hundred and ninety thousand by twenty forty-one. We have a current operational expenditure budget of a hundred and fifty-eight million, a capital works budget of eighty-nine million. And this expenditure aims to provide both services to our community and critical infrastructure for our growing local government area. As a finance professional with over fourteen years' experience within local government, I've witnessed firsthand how it is becoming increasingly difficult over the years for council to balance its budgets, while still continuing to provide services and infrastructure to the community due to factors outside of council's control. Section eight B of the Local Government Act requires council spending to be responsible and sustainable. Council must align revenue and expenditure to aim to achieve intergenerational equity, which is becoming a great challenge to council. And I believe that finance, the current financial model currently used by councils requires reform. In regard to income, council rates accounts for approximately fifty percent and is used to found council's general, general operations. Previously, the rate pegging methodology adopted by IPAT use a local government cost index. This was backward looking and not reflective of, of market and industry and economic factors. In addition, many properties are rate exempt regardless of the demand placed on services and infrastructure by these properties. In regard to expenditure, industry and market factors such as construction costs, utilities, insurance, cybersecurity, environmental sustainability targets and occurrences of cost shifting outside of council's control, such as election costs, street lighting and audit fees have had a major impact on council's ability to deliver services and infrastructure while managing these expenses in a financially sustainable manner. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll move now to the committee for questions, Dr Amanda Con.
Thanks so much for making the time to, to appear before us today. I had a question from the written submission from the City of Ride. You mentioned that you introduced previously a compliance levy to pay for development monitoring and regulatory activities that was later removed by the Department of Planning. I was hoping you could expand on that in more detail and, and explain, I suppose, what it was and how it works and what the impact has been on the City of Ride from not being able to do that.
Yeah. So the compliance levy was introduced even in my previous council where I worked. And it was to levy it on the cost of development of a development to account for all the compliance costs in terms of building certification, regulatory costs, things like that. That was a great source of income for council at the time. And we would hold that income and obviously then be able to use it to, to fund those kind of departments. However, yes, that was repealed and we actually had to refund certain, like the funds that was received from a certain point in time. So that was obviously again, another example of where there was a opportunity for council to try and lean on its own source of income rather than rates income. However, it was, it was disallowed.
Thanks. I was also interested, the written submission mentions the housing policy changes from the state government, so the state significant developments, build to rent, affordable housing zoning changes. We've touched on that a little bit already this morning, but specifically in the context of Ride, how, how is that impacting the council?
Okay, so I guess bill to rent is, is probably a really good example to use. We've actually got three bill to rent properties in progress at the moment. So the rules state that bill to rent is exempt from subdivision for a period up to fifteen years. However, in the Macquarie Park zone, it's in perpetuity. So that means that although the, the properties are currently business and obviously with a business property, you're getting a higher rate in the dollar. So it actually provides council with a decent amount of income. The residential rate in the dollar is much lower. So because it prevents subdivision, like a normal developer who would develop, say apartments and strutted them out, you would be paying that residential rate in the dollar per dwelling. However, if it's only considered as one assessment due to the prevention of subdivision and it is still classed as residential, we'll actually be making, we'll be actually be getting a lot less for that, that particular property. But you have to also consider with these properties that we do have in Macquarie Park, I think there's three of them. All of them have over three hundred dwellings. The amount of population and need for services within those precincts, it's going, there's a lot of demand on the service and obviously there's then not enough income to try and satisfy that demand and obviously provide infrastructure, provide services for those additional population. I'm sorry, same, same with. Sorry, same with state significant developments. With state significant developments, they won't, they're developments where developers, council are pretty much left out of the process, and that obviously has an impact on development contributions, which we're noticing. So if it's lodged as a state significant development, often they don't have to come to council, they can kind of bypass council in a way, and we, it's the impact on development contributions that a developer would usually pay for the amount of dwellings.
Thank you.
And can I just, do you want to take a couple on that? And just why is that the case? Is that because they're not entering into voluntary planning agreements with you or the like? Or what's that prohibitor in terms of, I imagine there's section seven, ten and eleven contributions there as well, but there's, what's the difference effectively?
Section seven eleven contributions are-
Seven eleven and seven twelve, yeah.
Yep, seven eleven, seven twelve. Seven eleven, seven twelve are fixed contributions, however, seven eleven is based on the price that we have per dwelling, so one-bedroom apartment will pay a certain amount, two and three and so forth will pay a certain rate that council has struck. And then obviously IPART has a minimum, but there's a certain rate that's struck. However, with SSDs, I might have to take it on notice in terms of the planning side of it, but from from my understanding is they can enter into voluntary planning agreements with us. But even with voluntary planning agreements, what we're noticing is a lot of the contributions through the state significant developments actually being written off by the developer providing like a public benefit to us, so they might provide a road in between-
So essentially they're entering into a voluntary planning agreement with the state and bypassing council?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, but if you could take it on notice, any further detail or examples, that'd be helpful.
I'll be happy to.
Sorry, Dr Con.
I've just got one more.
Yeah, go for it, yep, go.
Your written submission also provided a really helpful list of sort of external fees and charges that you've described under cost shifting, so street lighting, election costs, value of general fees, et cetera. I'd be really interested and appreciate you might need to take this on notice if you've actually quantified those things and what the impact on council has been. And particularly with those costs increasing, how has council offset those? What impact has it actually had on services of having to increase funding for those?
Yeah, I'm happy to take the actual physical figures on notice and I'll be able to get you some numbers. But again, yeah, similar to election costs as well, that's something that we've noticed that obviously every year, every time there's an election, each year I've budgeted, that's gone up significantly. It's more or less the same process, the electrical emission, pretty much we pay them, but there's a lot of council resources still that goes into making sure that happens, but that those have increased over time. Audit fees is another real recent one which we've noticed, so the New South Wales Audit Office in the past, council obviously would get their own contract auditor and would go out to tender and obviously many councils had one of the big four. The audit office have come in now and have initially, they actually contracted their own, and but now we've been told that the audit office will be doing us directly, and I think that's for a lot of the larger councils. We've noticed in the last bill that we've got for this twenty-three, twenty-four audit, the increase in the audit fee has gone up by forty-five percent. So that is something that we have no choice in terms of the audit at a general, in terms of selecting who to audit. We have no choice in terms of their audit scope, the amount of hours they want to do, and we've obviously just been given a bill of that amount. So we are talking to them about that, you know, it is it is an increase and it is hard to try and find things like that that come left field. Yeah, I think that's, but I will get back to you on in terms of the details, in terms of those cost increases over the years.
Thank you, that's a really helpful example.
Thanks, did you want to go next?
Yeah, just picking up on that build-to-rent point you made in Macquarie Park as well, and I've sided right actually with our previous witnesses in the five hundred million that effectively you had estimated that it did cost council. But you mentioned about Macquarie Park and the peculiar situation in Macquarie Park where that prohibition in terms of subdivision is in perpetuity rather than for fifteen years, how did that come about?
Looking at the rules, I think it talked about the zoning, it was particularly about the zoning. So I think from memory, it was E-two zoning, which stated, and that's what that area is zoned at. So that's why it's in perpetuity, I think the other impact which, in terms of Macquarie Park, which we're facing with that, is currently considered an innovation district.
Yeah.
And it obviously brings a lot of local economy, jobs and and things like that, but if obviously over time, if built to rent, if all these commercial properties turn into built-to-rent, like you've got a lot of those commercial companies that are in that precinct now that will move out and you won't have that local economy there in terms of the commercial and the jobs and and things like that, so there's also-
And you have a different infrastructure requirement from council as well to cater for a for a business hub compared to catering for a residential hub.
Yeah, correct, so you can imagine if it's a commercial precinct, you can imagine people only go there, you know, during the week. They're pretty much there, they might go at a lunchtime, a lot of people working from home now, they may not even be in the office in that precinct. So there's not much of a stress on the infrastructure, but we are collecting that business rate income. However, if it does turn all into built-to-rent, which seems to be the trend, like you said, there is going to be a massive increase in population, however, the demand on services is going to be greater too, but the income is not going to be enough to satisfy that.
Okay, thank you, now you also identified in terms of the construction on Crown Land in your submission as well. Can you just tell us, and that's back to the rate exemptions part, I think you say, for example, the housing development by Department of Housing within the Macquarie precinct where more than two thousand privately-owned units are scheduled to be constructed on Crown Land will result in the loss of potential income of approximately two million dollars due to their rates exemption. Is that in terms of, as we've heard previously, with benevolent associations and that managing properties and being rate-exempt, or is that another quirk?
No, that's just to, just as an example of like the, how ratings and properties such as like, you know, Crown Land, hospitals, schools, universities, religious bodies. Again, similar to the build-to-rent example, they, those properties have a lot of population that come in. However, if they're not ratable, then we do not have the income there to satisfy them. And as you can imagine, say with Macquarie University, with a lot of the Crown Land, they're quite big parcels.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
No worries.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for coming here today. In your submission, you talk a lot about the special variation process and talk about how onerous and time-consuming that process is. I'm just wondering how we make it easier for councils to be able to access these variations when needed, like what actually needs to change this so that it's not like this huge process?
I think the last time that we received a special variation was in fourteen fifteen, and that was for infrastructure backlog. And so that was a permanent rate, special rate variation that we have got. From my understanding, it's a long process, I think you have to prove to IPART that the community has the capacity to pay, that they won't be impacted. I think the other thing too is you have to get support from council too. So as you can imagine, as the elected body, increasing rates is not something that, is something that they usually would go for in the first instance. So there's a lot of, like I said, there's eighteen to twenty-four month period because it's almost like you have to brief councillors, you have to get them on board, you have to put out your long-term financial plan and show them, it's almost like you have to prove to IPART that a special variation is required, it's almost like you have to be in the red already and heading further in the red, rather than being proactive and and looking to the future and thinking, okay, well, we're growing, we need this infrastructure, the cost of services is more expensive, we need to do something now. So in ten years' time, like I said about intergenerational equity, that we can provide that for the future. So I'm not sure in terms of what what can be done in terms of expanding the process. However, it would be, it would be good if, you know, council had a bit more power in terms of determining that would be like the right time to do it and when they could do it.
So maybe the whole process itself needs to be revamped rather than finding a way to make it faster, it's sort of just-
So I I think that's why councils will often just elect to look at cutting services because that's something operationally that can be done. However, that's not always the best outcome for the community, looking like, looking for, as my, as an accountant myself and, you know, as Acting Chief Financial Officer, every year we do try and and find efficiency gains, like, you know, putting putting pressure on rate payers is not what we want to do. We always look for own-source income and and try to drive those other income sources because that's, you know, in most cases you want to try and avoid that, but I think the way things are going now, it seems like it is necessary.
Thank you, your submission also talked about state significant developments and how that will have an adverse impact on council rates, incomes and developer contributions. I'm just wondering what you think, you know, this committee can recommend in that space, what needs to actually happen as a solution.
I'm not a planner, but from my understanding of state state significant developments, I think councils are being cut out of the approval process. So I know that has a big impact essentially with the negotiation of of developer contributions and I think often, I was mentioning before, that often items are dedicated to council as a public benefit. However, often that whatever's dedicated, how often just serves the development, doesn't actually serve the community. It may not be things that council wants. Whereas with the developer contributions, obviously it's levied based on the number of dwellings and it's based on council's contribution plan. And council then can use that fund, that those, that funding to actually provide the infrastructure within the LGA to support those developments. But with the SSDs, yes, unfortunately it doesn't happen, and I did touch on the BTR before. The BTR, we've got three examples in Macquarie, Macquarie Park at the moment, which are currently in progress. And that's to do with residential subdivision not allowed in those precincts. Because subdivision's not allowed, they're just levied as one assessment and they're classed as residential. The residential rate in the dollar is much lower than the business rate in the dollar. And because of that prevention of subdivision, I think in most cases it says fifteen years, but because of the particular zoning in Macquarie Park, it says in perpetuity. So you're essentially having, you know, within one of those new build-to-rent apartments, you're having about three hundred plus, three hundred plus people, up to five hundred, all that extra population, but you're only getting essentially treated as one assessment at a residential rate. And it's it's not enough to satisfy the increased demand.
Thank you.
Thanks. Mr Thieremine, thank you so much for making time to be here today. I also had a couple of questions about state significant developments. And, you know, in terms of what you were saying previously, does this mean that council infrastructure on costs are unfunded? If that makes sense?
Sorry, could you repeat?
So when you were talking about state significant developments previously and and the implications that that would result for a local council like your own, when something becomes a state significant development, I'm just interested in understanding some of the the knock-on impacts for a local council, such as whether, you know, the infrastructure costs would then as a result not be funded.
Yes. I guess it comes down to, like I said, with the developer contributions, usually with renewal of existing assets, council will attempt to put money aside each year from its budget and use a like asset replacement kind of funding for renewal. I mentioned we have a special variation that was done in fourteen fifteen to make sure that council's existing assets are kept at a great good standard and they're serviced. However, with new developments, you could imagine there'd be new infrastructure required, whether it be all the roads and, you know, things to support the development, and obviously open space, if it's required as well to to support, you know, those developments. And those, when it comes to new developments and new infrastructure that's needed, we heavily rely on developer contributions. So if that does change due to state significant, because we're obviously not involved as much in those processes, because the developers are going directly through the state, that will impact our funding if we have to provide the infrastructure, which we will have to.
Okay, thank you for clarifying. Earlier you made a reference to increasing non-rates and other, you know, own revenue sources. I'd just invite you to to talk further about that and and what opportunities there are there.
I guess I could say that, so rates accounts for about fifty percent. When we've got statutory, like we've got, use it to call it fees and charges, amounts for roughly around, I would say probably seventeen percent. The only thing with the fees and charges is a lot of them are statutory, so a lot of them are not really controlled by us. We are told, you know, very, very few and far between when they do go up, and it has never kept in line with with the price of costing this, like the the cost of the service essentially. So I think things like that would be would be good to look at. We do obviously look at where we can, trying to drive other sources of income. And like I said, with the income that are already staples of council, we try to make sure that we do hit those targets and we do try to generate those things, so whether it be, you know, bus, like I said, compliance, fine, income, things like that. A lot of the, unfortunately, a lot of the other income that we have too is, you know, like due to contracts, like whether it be leases or bus shelter income. But there's not much room to move there. We do try internally and obviously to try and drive those things as as a performance measure of council. So I have my team, obviously, within every one of their business units that they manage, to drive all that income for for all those under every business. And planning obviously brings in a lot in terms of, like I said, the DA income, a compliance income. And we try to drive those incomes, but yes, we do look for opportunities, but like I said, it's, it is hard to. Being a being a council too, you're providing a community, like a service to the community. So often, unlike a private company where you would recover the cost of service and and try and make a profit, you have to obviously consider that we are providing like a community service, we have to obviously be quite balanced with our neighbours, neighbouring councils too, we obviously can't charge, even though it might cost us a lot more, we can't charge a lot more, we have to be fair. So we are a bit limited there in terms of even our fees and charges and and like I said, it doesn't amount amount too much.
Thank you, your predecessor in your role told the Sydney Morning Herald that the City of Ride finances were precarious. Why is that?
With the City of Ride finances and with the previous CFO, when when she first came to the City of Ride, she discovered that funds from externally restricted developer contributions were moved to council's internal reserves. And there was a project called the Ride Central Project, which was to build essentially a civic centre opposite the top ride shopping centre. And she, in her investigation, she she found that money was used and moved from developer contributions, which is obviously strictly managed by legislation and should not be used for any other purposes other than providing infrastructure to the community because it's been received by developers, that's the purpose it was received and that's what it should be used for. However, it was moved to an internal Ride Central Reserve to to complete that project. So once she discovered that, she informed the CEO. The CEO directed that she undertake a thorough investigation with forensic accountants and and getting legal opinion. And thank God we, she had pretty much found that before they actually had started spending money on the project. So it was due to COVID, there was delays with the project, and obviously now we've returned that those, that funding, we've put it back to its rightful sources. In terms of her comment about the precarious situation, there are a lot of projects, and and this is still another one which is being talked about, the Ride Central Project. There are a lot of projects that council wants to commit to in terms of like major projects that we have in our horizon. However, committing to those projects, I think she's concerned about the going concern. So as of now, yes, we're okay, but there are things that have come up, so I'm not too sure if you you read, we also have VPA obligations. So in that investigation, she discovered, sorry, the forensic accountant also discovered VPAs that were either in executed or operating status. And what had happened was when a developer obviously hands you and dedicates you an asset, whether it be a road or a park, eventually they'll hand it over to council. So when it becomes council's, in council's ownership, we have to ongoing fund the renewal and maintenance of that asset. And there were seventeen VPAs identified. They all, obviously, will all come on board at at different times. And that maintenance and renewal, that lifecycle costing was never done, so it was never in council's long-term financial plan. So that was one thing that picked up, one of those VPAs as well had a fit out of a library and creative hub. That was thirty million, again, that's the responsibility of council, never budgeted, never considered, it was signed up. And so now we actually have in our new long-term plan, which is currently finished exhibition, it's, we'll be going to council in June for adoption. We have actually provided all those costs within the long-term plan, all the maintenance, all the renewal. We've obviously talked to our asset management team, they've kind of told us the delivery of those items and we've and we've provided for it. So as I mentioned, like looking at, as we stand now, we've balanced the budget for twenty-four, twenty-five with difficulty, but when she talks about a precarious situation, she's talking about the going concern, she's talking about the future. So this is where I think in that report, we we do say that, you know, we, council needs to start considering now the cut, a cut to services or special rates- The cut, a cut to services or, uh, special rates variation, um, because from memory, I think it was about, uh. Two point five million dollars in renewal that needs to be put aside each year and then about, uh, I think it was another two million again for. Uh, maintenance each year, um, and like I said, the thirty million is, we have, we have funds. In the developer contribution that's allocated to that project, however, that, that reserve pretty much will, will be pretty. Drawn down to nothing after that, but obviously we have to assume that those things will happen, um, their liabilities currently. They may happen, they may eventuate, but we have to assume that they will and it's prudent to obviously put money aside. Um, and, and be prepared for those things when they do come up.
Um, how, does Ride Council have the income to do all of the, the things that you've just mentioned, so?
The VPAs?
Yeah. Um. The library, the.
With, with the library, with the library and creative fit out, that's a, that's a thirty million, it's obviously an estimate at this stage, um, based on, um, like a. QS, a quantity surveyor, um, we do have funds, so within our section seven eleven plan, it is actually allocated in there. Um, the funding from a specific section seven level reserve, it's there, so we can rightfully use that money. Um, it is only a certain percent, so the section seven eleven plan looks at, um, what percentage actually is for the community. Um, so from memory, I think it's about eighty-two percent, I think, but the remainder has to come from council reserves. So we actually have the money in that, because we returned the funds, uh, as I mentioned about the Ride Central, that, that we have put that money back. Uh, to those external reserves, so luckily there is money to put aside for that. Um, however, if you look at the long-term financial plan, if you look from, from year three, you can see, you know, your net operating result is declining. Um, in the first couple of years, it's pretty much declining rapidly and you can see if, if, it starts getting into the red. So, um, we have to get, like I said, we have to kind of really think, um, how we're gonna, how we're gonna fund, like going forward. Like I said, initially now it's okay, um, we're balanced, um, but the going concern is what, what she means is a precarious situation and she's concerned about.
Yeah, so how is Ride, um, going to choose between those competing priorities?
Um, well, I, I think what we'll have to do is, I think, like I said, we're gonna have to workshop with councillors and we're gonna have to look at making some hard decisions. Um, with the VPAs, there's things, there are obligations that we're tied to, we can't get out of. Um, like I said, yes, some of them may eventuate, some of them may not, because they're actually based on the timing of the developer, developer. Um, so the Macquarie Park, uh, VPAs is active till November twenty twenty-five. Um, so it's up to the developers to enact that, but we still need to provide for it. Um, I think we do need to consider, like I said, a cut to services or a special rates variation, and I think we need to start thinking about that. Um, very, very soon.
Um, in terms of your own, um, you know, revenue sources and, and cost recovery, um. Uh, you've, obviously you've got a broad range of services, childcare, sporting, libraries, all of that sort of thing, does council make any money from this?
Um, depending on the service, uh, we don't have a childcare, we, City of Ride doesn't have a childcare.
Sorry.
But we, depending on the service, uh, we, where possible, um, uh, we have like a, a sustainability principles and where possible, we do try to. Achieve cost recovery at a minimum, um, but as you can imagine, certain services. You, certain services you can, certain services you can't, um, you know, trying to find that balance between providing a community service. Obviously provide, charging a fair fee in comparison to the market and your other neighbouring councils is always a consideration, so even when we do the fees and charges. Um, this year for the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, we have done an increase of five percent, but that is after benchmarking with other councils. In some cases, five percent is too high, um, libraries is a good example, um, a lot of the fees there, we can't actually increase like that because. It's not, it becomes unfair and it becomes uncompetitive as well, um, so it is, it is a hard balance to, to try and find that.
Yeah, um, in terms of the situation that, um, you sort of really, um, articulately, um, explained for us about. You know, that the state, um, of, of council's finances, um, what led council to be in that situation?
Um, I'm not too sure exactly, uh, I've only been at the City of Ride for a year and a half, um. I, I just think there, I just think there was cases just of, um, you know. I guess thinking about the whole long-term intergenerational equity concept, I think that's something that the previous CFO. Has brought in, um, I, I'm not too sure of what's happened in the past, um, but I know I, I started shortly after she did. Um, and pretty much bringing in this culture of best practice financial management. Um, and, and looking at things really closely like that and obviously finding things before it got to a point where it was too late. Um, that's where we've kind of stepped in, um, so I'm unsure about, you know, in terms of what has led council to that point. Um, but we are now revised and looking forward, um, in terms of trying to, you know, now we've actually tried to fix. Everything and obviously we've implemented a lot of, uh, policy to make sure, like we implemented a cash reserve policy. Um, to make sure that things like this don't happen again, um, but in terms of how it, over time it became like that. Um, I, I'm not too sure.
No, thank you, um, uh, in terms of the approach that you, you know, you've, you've talked about, um. You know, the best practice sort of accounting or management that, that you talk about, um, I just wonder what, whether or not that, um. That's started to look now at any of the other, um, revenue sources for Ride Council, so whether you've got. Um, any investments like property that, that could possibly generate a return for the council.
Um, we, 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 we do, we do try, um, to look at, like, like I said, like a lot of the, um, property. Investments that we have are, whether they be commercial leases and things like that, a lot of them are obviously on, on fixed contracts and they, you'll get your three percent. You know, market, uh, increase and they're over time, uh, we have bus shelter advertising contract that's currently, you know, in, in play at the moment. Um, depending on the number of bus shelters that are rolled out, uh, we will get advertising, uh, from that, uh, income from that. Um, but council operations is council operations and, and usually there are the, the normal, the normal sources of, sources of income. That we do have, um, because we are trying to, you know, um, complete council business, um, and provide those services to the community, so. We do try to look for opportunities, um, and they do, they do come, um, but obviously, we obviously have to be focused on, on providing our core services to.
Yeah, in, in terms of looking for opportunities, um, do you have the capacity to invest in, in assets that might generate a return if that opportunity, as you say, arose?
Um, we, we do, so, so we have, um, obviously internal reserve for investment property, purchase of investment property, um, we. Often the purchase of property sometimes is obviously a strategic purpose too, like sometimes the. Some things, sometimes you might purchase a, a property not, not due to the rental, um, you know, income that you receive from it or the, or the return that you will receive. From, from renting it out, but it might have a future purpose, whether it become open space, um, or something for the community. Um, tho- those, those purchases are, are, are done like that too.
Okay, I'm just looking at my colleagues, I've, I've got more questions, but whether, wondering whether or not you had any others, okay, wonderful, Sam? No. Um, in terms of the services, um, that City of Ride has, um. Your, so City of Ride area grew by five thousand residents in the last twelve months, um, how much of an impact does that have on your bottom line?
Um, well, we, we do, we do obviously get, get supplementary levies when there are, um, additional properties coming on board. But from, from coming from a council, which was a high-growth council to the City of Ride, like we are growing very quickly, but the growth is not as much, so sometimes. I think there is a bit of a mismatch between, you know, people assume that because you're having that extra growth in population and you are getting those supplementary levies. On the other end, the expenditure side is increasing at a much bigger rate. So, we are capped by that rate peg, um, that is the maximum that we can increase the rates by. Um, often council again, like they can take up to the maximum, um, of the rate peg, so. We've had an instance where council voted not to take the maximum, um, they took underneath that, so that's also, and we almost have to justify. Um, taking the maximum, um, which is good, like I think the councillors are on board, they, they have taken the maximum last year and this year. Um, but I think the expenditure side is, is, is the focus, because I think that's where there's absolutely no control, so the rate peg, as you can imagine, like last. Last year was, or this year was three point seven percent, um, but inflation is, is way higher, you can imagine construction costs after COVID. To try and actually, you know, complete capital projects, um, things like that are completely mismatched.
Do you think, so will the new rate peg methodology account for a lot of what you've just said and the issues?
I, I think, I think the new, uh, the new rate, rate peg methodology, which has been introduced from twenty-four, twenty-five, I, I think it's, um, it's a, it's a good step forward. Um, in terms of how it was before, so in the past, like I mentioned, the local government cost index was often very backwards looking. It was looking at two years' worth of data, uh, two years' old data, um, and it created a very big lag, so. You're, and that lag is compounding over time, that compounds, um, and makes it, you know, very difficult to catch up. Um, it's similar to, you know, not taking the full rate peg to, like, if you take less than the maximum, you know, that, that will compound over time. Um, the new methodology, I, I think is, is a lot more simplified, um, looking at, you know, the three main cost components of council, looking at, you know, the category of council. Obviously giving us a ESL factor, I think really, really helps, the ESL factor does help, um, but it obviously sometimes it. It doesn't match up to what the actual increase is, and again, that's something that is completely out of our control, depending on what is happening, um, in the insurance industry and. And, you know, in terms of claims and things like that too, so it's, it's those kind of left field, um, costs that kind of do surprise us. Um, and we would like to give funding for, you know, things that we want to do and growth and, and things like that, but. Sometimes we have to make those diffi- difficult decisions to, you know, scale back on certain things or, you know, stage things out in a way. Um, that we can afford it.
Um, when you look at the example of the five thousand additional residents in the last twelve months. I'm interested in whether or not they increase the service requirements for council more than. They would say bring in the rates to provide those services.
Yes, definitely, um. It's, yeah, it, it's hard to, to look at, you know, how much does, does one resident, um, bring versus how much they spend, um. But you could imagine, like, with, with a population, you know, you do need the infrastructure and, and, and to construct infrastructure, it's, it's very expensive. Um, so it is, it is a bit of a mismatch, like obviously it does help, um, it does help, uh, especially with, you know, with an apartment complex. It would help if you have, you know, five hundred dwellings and they're all separately stratted and, and we do get extra, extra funding from there, but. It, it is, it is hard to, you know, equate those two.
Yeah, thank you.
Can I just pick up?
No, go for it.
Just a second, um, is this partly because there's sort of a cross-subsidisation that's always existed when it comes to local government with. Um, business, commercial, industrial rates effectively offsetting residential rates somewhat, and then when you're changing that component, the rate base for council. Gets stretched much further.
Yeah, that, that's correct, so, like I mentioned with the BTR, the, the rate in the dollar for, uh, residential is a lot less than your business. Um, we do wait, we do have a waiting between business and residential, um, business obviously pays more of the pie. You could sort of say the waiting, um, because, and that's because, you know, in terms of the residential rate payers, um. They, like I guess, that, that you don't put stress on the residential rate, rate payers, whereas the business rate payers actually have more capacity to pay. Um, so yes, that, that, that is true.
Yeah, sorry.
No, no, good, good question, um, in terms of the, I, I want to turn now just briefly with the time we have left to talk about expenses of. Of a council, um, how much is spent each year by your council on consultants?
Um, I'll have to take that on notice in terms of multi-year expenditure and consultants, but, uh, we, at the March review, uh, which went to council last night. Um, about one point three million dollars has been spent to date on consultants, but that would include all council operations into, in terms of, you know, whether it be. Anything to do with infrastructure and, and, and all around the building, so it, it's, it's not just one area, um. Um, and I think it's, it's pretty normal, I would say, um, but I'll have to get back to you in terms of multi-year, how much we spend each year on consultants.
Sure, um, and just if you could, um, also, how, how do you ensure you're getting value for money, um, from these consultants?
Yes, and sorry, one more thing I'd like to add about consultants, um, another, another thing as well, like, um, since, since the previous CFO and myself have started here. Um, we've, we've actually, we've moved away from, we've actually brought back a lot of practices internally in terms of. Getting, getting staff to move away from put, take, taking jobs out to consultants and getting a lot of the jobs and work done in-house.
Okay.
So I think in my first year when setting the draft budget, um, which was twenty-three, twenty-four, I actually found savings of about one point two million dollars in consultancy.
Wow.
Because year on year, um, you know, budgets were essentially given to, um, department managers. And there was no analysis of how much they were actually spending each year, and sometimes often if you give someone a budget and you CPI it each year. They're gonna assume that they can spend it and it's theirs, so coming in, that was one of my first things, um, I came, I started at a time where we set the draft budget. Um, and I pretty much got my team to look at every single account and consultancies was one that was actually raised and, um, obviously agency staff as well was another one.
Yeah.
Um, and pretty much getting business managers to really rethink how they work. Um, and not relying on consultants, um, and building talent in-house, so we've actually made a lot of improvements in that respect to, um. You know, managers as well, like, you know, they might have had external staff, um, budgets, and then they might have had a full complement of staff and, and doing that as well, and we've kind of. Slowly scaled that all back, um, and said, you know, you should use your in-house staff, that's what you've got a team for. Um, and that's where I guess the financial management comes in even at that lower level, um, so before, um, the CFO. I'm acting now, but I was, I'm actually the financial controller, um, and that's really my job to be on the ground and then make sure that kind of is monitored and kept. Um, and your question about value for money, um, procurement's really, really important in local government. Um, and so we, we have also again, you know, since, since coming, we've obviously. Really re-raised the importance of procurement in local government, um, and making sure people always receive value for money, people, we have a procurement guidelines, an internal document. Um, which really, a lot of councils do, really outlines of steps, um, and makes it really simple for every person who's procuring for the organisation. How many quotes that they need to get depending on the value, depending whether it's a panel with pricing, a panel without pricing, whether it's a state government contract. It pretty much gives them a matrix to pretty much make sure that they go out and they get value for money, um, and they test the market, um, even say contracts that we have. Um, with, say, with IT, um, a lot of them are, are long-term contracts, um, but we've tried to really bring in and change that, whereas in the past, maybe they might have just been. Signed off, um, and yes, maybe, maybe, maybe that provider might be the best provider, but if you don't test the market, you don't really know. You don't really know if you're getting value for money or you're getting a good price or you're getting the best product, so that's been a big reform as well within the organisation where procurement is actually like. You know, quite important, um, and we have a human team, um, that does a lot of that checking and, and people are becoming more aware in the organisation of their responsibilities. As well as managers, um, to make sure that they follow process, um, and do the right thing and obviously always, we always drill in that, you know, you are. You have got rate payers money, this is not your money, it's rate payers money, um, you always have to try and get the best outcome out of it, um, you know, spend it like. You know, spend it carefully pretty much.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, I'm just looking, no, no further questions, uh, thank you very much, uh, Mister Theremin, uh, for your, uh, attendance at today's hearing and for giving evidence to this inquiry. Um, the committee secretary will be in touch regarding any questions on notice also, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, um, welcome, um, and thank you so much for making time to give evidence to this important inquiry. Um, if, uh, just in starting, could I get you to introduce yourself by name, your position title, um, and swear either the oath or affirmation?
Sure, um, so Graham Sansom, uh, currently adjunct professor at UTS. Uh, previously, um, director and professor of the Australian Centre of Excellence for Local Government and a, and a stint at the. Australian Local Government Association before that. Um, and the affirmation, I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm, uh, that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth. And nothing but the truth.
Thank you, would you like to start by making a short opening statement?
Yes, look, just a, a few quick points, rereading my submission this morning, I thought, oh, that goes around a bit in circles, so I've tried to. To crystallise what I really wanted to tell you, um, so I, I think the most important starting point is that. There hasn't been a comprehensive review of local government sustainability in New South Wales since twenty-twelve, thirteen. When the Treasury Corporation undertook its, its analysis and that was part of the, of the work of the independent review that I chaired at that time. Um, I start the submission by talking about the legislation because I think it's really important, the parliament. Through the, the Constitution Act and the Local Government Act has, has made it. has, has made it clear what its broad expectations of local government are. And the Local Government Act then, then fills in some of that detail. The biggest gap in the legislation in New South Wales in terms of this inquiry, in my view, is that unlike Victoria, we don't have any objectives for rate pegging. So we've had rate pegging for fifty years, but the, the parliament has never actually said precisely what it's supposed to be there for. So the Victorian Act does that, and, and, and quite well, in my view. Related to that, there are, I think, a lot of policy gaps still that, that need to be filled. And back in, with my colleagues back in twenty twelve, thirteen, we weren't all that happy with the level of liaison between the key agencies involved in oversighting local government. And I think that's pretty much still the case. But I'm not, I'm not in any way an insider anymore. I have, as I say in the, in the submission, some particular concerns about the direction I part took in relation to the rate peg in its, in its latest report. And, and, and my key concern there is that it overlooks just how crucial integrated planning and reporting ought to be in the whole setup. I don't think the whole setup can work unless everyone is taking integrated planning and reporting seriously, particularly when it comes to special variations. And just two other final points. First of all, as I say in the submission, one of the real issues, I think, for this inquiry and for, for the state government is that intentionally or otherwise, rate pegging and the other limits that are placed in legislation on local government revenues actually are depriving the whole of the state public sector of resources to do the things that need to be done. So that rates are a good source of revenue. Inquiries over the years have said they're a good source of revenue, they're a tax, they're a, okay, there are tax on wealth and some people don't like that, but, but they could be used better. And finally, as I say, if you, if the government wishes or the parliament wishes to maintain rate pegging, I think there are other and better ways of doing it than the method at present.
Thank you, and thank you for your detailed submission as well that went to some of this. I'm just looking at the committee for questions. Dr Amanda Con.
Thank you also for the written submission and the attachments, which have been really helpful. I particularly appreciated that you've spent some time looking at what happens in other jurisdictions in Australia. And in particular, you've commented that the South Australian and Tasmanian models appear to offer the best way forward. So I was hoping you could describe in more detail what happens in Tasmania and, and South Australia and I guess justify that position that it's the best approach.
I, I do qualify it, I think, by saying the proposed provisions in Tasmania because Tasmania's been having a few political complications lately. But South Australia has empowered their Essential Services Commission, the equivalent of IPART, to do reviews of each council's long-term financial planning at not greater than three-year intervals. So it's at the commission's discretion, whether it's every three, four, five years or whatever. And they then, they look at the revenue and expenditure mix of the council against its, its stated long-term plan. They offer a, a judgment publicly to the council on whether any modifications to that plan might be needed, which could include, for example, a judgment that they're relying excessively, to, to pick up one, one of the things you asked the previous speaker, whether they're relying excessively on business rates rather than residential rates. That the, the commission could pick that point up and give public advice to the council that it needs to, to make an adjustment. Or it could make, state to the council that it's not convinced of, of the level of efficiency and effectiveness in its operations and so on. So it, it's not an audit, a general exercise, but it is a kind of performance audit.
So in, in trying to summarise my own understanding of that, it sounds like it's a much more qualitative and individualised sort of, rather than a, a statewide benchmark or, you know, meeting ratios, et cetera.
They're not attempting to come up with the kind of magic number or, or under IPART's new system, three magic numbers that, that cover everybody. They're, they're focusing much more, yes, on, exactly, on a qualitative approach, suggesting to councils publicly, and the council has to respond publicly to these recommendations, that some things could be done better, you know, your financial settings may not be as good as they should be, et cetera.
Thank you. You just mentioned the IPART's new rate methodology. And I'm sure you were probably watching the previous hearing where we heard from IPART, but I asked them about the three rating categories and whether in their opinion that took in, to account the sort of really unique circumstances of some councils that have totally different service provisions than other councils. I think from memory, I used the example of Urela Council that runs an aged care facility. They told the committee that they were quite confident that the methodology does take into account that kind of variation. It sounds like from your written submission, you disagree with that. Could you explain in more detail?
Look, I, I, I don't have the, the level of, of expertise in, you know, in, in the, the dark arts of economics to, to flat out disagree. But I, I am concerned in, in two or three respects, I guess. Firstly, I, I'm, I'm not convinced that even that approach that they're now suggesting to, to find a rate peg number can possibly take all relevant factors into account. I've never been one to say that every council is unique. Local government people often do, and I used to work in a council and probably said the same thing at the time. But, 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 you know, so broadly, you can categorise councils. But when it comes to financial management, there will inevitably be significant strategic differences from one to another. Because they're there, according to the Local Government Act, they're there to reflect the needs and aspirations of their local communities. So they are required, in a sense, to be different. And I, and I just don't see how crunching a whole heap of numbers can actually pick all that up. My other big concern-
So can I ask you, Mr, just on that? So, so what, given that variance in terms of the, the variance created by the demand side of the equation, which is the community across different councils, what, what would you, if you wanted to distill the main deficiencies in the current system in terms of catering for that variance, what, what is it? What would you do? Because you've got, currently, we've got, if I was the devil's advocate, I'd say, well, hang on. We've got a rate system, we've got a rate pegging system, you've got special rate variations. There's enough flexibility in there to deal with what you're talking about.
Theoretically, there is, yes. And, and the, the key, the key words there are special variations. My underlying concern with the way things have gone with IPART recently is that the rate pegging system has two components, setting a peg and processing special variations. And they've gone flat out to come up with what they regard as a very accurate peg. But their, their report said very little about how we can make the special variation process work effectively. So the problem there is that-
Oh, so that's interesting. So your view is, is that because the analysis of the peg in their mind is so surgically accurate, that less emphasis has been put on the ability of the special rate variations to work?
I think it, what it will do, and we, we've seen this already over the years, and, and this was mentioned again by your previous speaker, councilors, not unreasonably, are disinclined to put in a special variation, to say to their community, that rate peg level won't meet our needs, we're going to ask you to pay a bit more than that. So the more scientific the rate peg looks, I think, the more, or the, the less councillors will be inclined to go above it. And that cuts right across the integrated planning and reporting system, which was introduced in two thousand and nine, for the precise purpose of making councils talk to their communities about their particular needs and how those needs can best be met. So if that's working properly, you would expect a lot of special variation applications. But in practice, we get very few, because, mainly because of the, 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 the political signal that the rate peg sends. So I'd rather have a vague rate peg and more special variations.
Okay, but doesn't that imply the degree of scientific accuracy on the rate peg? In one sense, I'd imagine the theory is, yeah, but that's necessary because then when you do go for a special rate variation, it's based on a specific community need, which you've gone out and campaigned on and got the community's buy-in. Therefore, it, it, it kind of complements each other. I mean, I imagine that's the theory.
I think the problem is that, that it's someone else's assessment. It's, it's IPART's assessment of the direction of travel of a council. That direction of travel ought to be a matter for debate, discussion, agreement between the council and its community. And, and things come out of left field that you can't necessarily plug into, to even a, you know, a, a very scientific, if you like, rate peg. I just think, I just think it's getting the balance wrong. And certainly when we did our review, which is more than a decade ago now, we were most concerned at the number, at how few councils were lodging special variations. And IPART at that time responded with a streamlined special variation process linked to integrated planning and reporting. Whereas in the most recent report, IPART seems to have moved right away from that and, and barely mentioned special variations and gives only a fairly dismissive reference to integrated planning and reporting. So IPART has changed its position very considerably since around twenty fourteen, fifteen to today.
So if you, if you were of the mind that the rate peg should stay, then the increased utility to the system is to look at the special rate variation, yeah?
Absolutely. To, to basically, and I've made a submission to IPART saying this, but basically to go back to the way IPART was doing things from around twenty twelve, thirteen until, I'm not sure exactly when it all changed, but maybe around about twenty sixteen, seventeen, that four or five-year period in there, when they were very explicitly saying to councils, do your planning first, talk to your community first, work out what you need, then come to us if you need to go higher than the rate peg.
Okay, thanks.
So, Dr Amanda Con, did you have further questions?
We've moved on, I'm all right.
Perfect. I might just jump in with a couple now. The IPNR frameworks that you mentioned in your submission, do you think these are being successfully utilised in local governments to meet their sustainability challenges?
It's very patchy, very patchy. Some councils are still very thorough with their IPNR, others, I think, have let it slip. And, and I think, the discussion we've just been having, I think rate pegging is part of the reason why they've let it slip. It's a kind of a, you know, why bother? And I think the, the other, and, and it's, it is resource intensive. And probably there's a need to look at the IPNR framework and find ways in which the relevant state agencies can more firmly require councils to abide by it, but at the same time to try and find ways to make it a bit less resource intensive and a bit, bit less easier to, to implement.
You talked about SRVs previously at, at length. Do you have a view about what the easiest way would be for the SRV process in New South Wales to be streamlined so that councils aren't, you know, intimidated or into making an application?
Exactly as I said a moment ago, the evidence is there. Go back to the, the streamlining that IPART introduced around about twenty thirteen. They didn't make this a, a, a firm position, but they, they put out a message that essentially, if you, if you weren't looking to go more than a two or three percent above the rate peg and you had a good case from your IPNR documentation, IPART would, I won't say tick and flick, but, but would not be, be putting you, run, putting you through the mill.
Yep. If it's the case that they've let the IPNR framework slip somewhat or, you know, patchy, as you say, how much of a problem is that going to be then?
Well, I think it's a serious problem because the, the whole point, and I, you know, I, I have to acknowledge I was heavily involved in, in putting the IPNR framework together originally, so I've got, you know, a bit of a position on it. But, but the whole idea, picking up the issue, the fundamental terms of reference of this inquiry, the whole idea was to find a mechanism by which councils explore the issues, the needs of their community, look at their financial position, et cetera, et cetera, and, and come up with a coherent mix of, of long-term plans and, and shorter-term delivery programmes to operate in, in an effective and sustainable manner. That, that was, that was where the people involved at the time were coming from. So the fact that, that by all accounts, and I'm not close enough again to be absolute test in, in, you know, in saying this, but my strong impression is that the, the attention to the framework has, has slipped in, in many cases. As I say, partly not unreasonably because it is resource intensive. But, but I think, I think the various state agencies ought to be having another look at it, ought to be agreeing. I mean, we really need IPART and the Office of Local Government and the Auditor General, at a minimum, those three, to reach an agreement on what they're trying to achieve by using such a framework and then tailoring it appropriately.
I'll just look to my colleagues, I've got other questions, but I'm just-
Well, look, just from my perspective, in terms of your perspective on grant allocation, how reliant councils have become on, on grants and grant funding. And whether you think that's a good model or whether you think that's something we should be looking at transitioning away from?
The answer's going to be, be pretty different in every case. I mean, there are a number of councils, City of Sydney, for example, that could trash it, transition away from, from grants quite rapidly, in my view. Would need a change to the, the rating provisions around apartments to, to capital improve value, which would generate very significant sums of additional revenue. But it could be done, and there are a number of councils in that category. If you look at the Grants Commission allocations, I think I've got the figure in there. There's twenty or so councils that, that are not very dependent at all on the general purpose grant components. And I think in most cases could transition away over a period of time. You know, you don't shut the door tomorrow, but I think that, that could be done. Because we've, then on the other hand, we've got a very large number of, of smaller rural and remote councils in New South Wales that inevitably will remain grant-dependent indefinitely to a very high degree. And there's only so much money in the kitty, so we've got to find ways of, of, of giving them more help, which I think does mean that we've got to shift the balance.
So is part of that answer transitioning those twenty or so out and then having a bigger pie for those other councils that rely on it?
Yep. I mean, you could, you could, this, this wouldn't be removing all grants on, on the numbers that I checked when I put the submission together. And I can't remember exactly what they are, but they're in there somewhere. I think there's seventy million or thereabouts going to those councils that could, over time, adjust their finances to live without that general purpose grant. And that would go a long way out in the bush.
Seventy-six million.
Sorry?
Seventy-six million.
Seventy-six.
You estimated, twenty-three councils, seventy-six million.
Okay.
Yep, I found that very interesting.
So, and that, as I say, that's not suggesting for one minute that those councils cease to receive any grants. I mean, there would still be special purpose grants, there would still be roads to recovery from the, from the feds, there would still be the roads component of the financial assistance grants going to those councils. I'm just talking about the general purpose money.
Thank you.
Thank you. In terms of the twenty thirteen T Court report that you mentioned earlier in your evidence and also mentioned in your report a number of times, that anticipated the, this, the current financial sustainability issues that, you know, obviously plague the sector. That report also found operating deficits that were understated due to some of the accounting tricks that were being used in relation to FAGs primarily. Are you aware of any of these sorts of financial tricks that are being used today to either overstate revenue or minimise expenditure in their financial reporting?
Not personally, but I, I, I had a quick look at the Auditor General's summary report on, on local government audits for the twenty twenty-three year. And that, that report does, you know, indicate a number of areas where the, the- And that that report does, you know, indicate a number of areas where the the financial reporting is not not as good as the Auditor General would like it to be. Um, and in fact, one of the reasons why we recommended bringing the Auditor General into local government audits was because of the findings that you've just mentioned that T-Corp made. Um, previously, every council appointed its own auditor, some appointed very good auditors, some appointed not so good auditors, and there was a lot of pressure to engage, um, low-cost auditors. Uh, so, uh, there was a need for for more, um, stringency. And I think the Auditor General over the last, however many years, it is now a decade, um, has progressively tightened things up on the reporting side. But we still don't know, at least I couldn't find any evidence in the Auditor General's report or anything else that's come out recently, we still don't know how just how sustainable or unsustainable every council is, which is what T-Corp was challenged to do back in twenty eleven, twelve. And I think did a lot of people complained about methodology and said, oh, you haven't got it right, you've been unfair to us. But on the whole, we had lengthy discussions with T-Corp, a very close look at their methodology and, um, and my colleagues on the review who knew much more about this stuff than I do. Um, we're confident that T-Corp had got it pretty close to right.
Interesting. Thank you. Um, in in your submission, you highlight a revenue pro- problem for New South Wales councils.
Yeah.
Um, and that, uh, New South Wales councils provide rate payers with excessive rating exemptions and concessions. Just to invite you to elaborate more about these concessions and exemptions and what we could do.
Well, um, the ca- the councils don't voluntarily provide those.
No, that's true, yeah.
Um, the legislation requires them to to provide them. Um, well, the the these are things like, you know, pensioner rates, concessions, uh, concessions for for charities, concessions for religions, concessions for state government agencies. In in one famous instance, concessions for oyster farmers. Um, there's a few very odd ones in there, uh, you know, concessions for the SCG, et cetera. So, um, there's a whole raft of this stuff and it it does mean a lot of revenue foregone. Um, and and I think some of that is justified. And it's, look, it's up to the to the Parliament and the government of the day to decide whether to put these things in acts. Um, but I think the consequences, there's there's good evidence that the consequences are quite serious. So, uh, it would be great if, um, if the committee suggested that the Parliament and the government have another look at some of those.
Thank you. Um, just looking at my colleague, the Honourable Emma Hurst, to see if she's got any questions.
Um, I might, uh, throw one out there, and sorry, I I did sort of leave for a moment, so I hope I'm not asking, repeating something. Um, I I, just in your submission, you talked about, um, the cost shifting, and obviously that's something we've talked a lot about, um, throughout this inquiry. Um, and there's obviously this real dispute around state government responsibility, local government responsibility. Um, you know, who is actually expected to to pay for certain aspects? Um, do you think that that needs to be sort of better identified, um, potentially in something like the Local Government Act? Um, where those clear boundaries actually lie?
Um, look, tha- that's an issue that all around the world, to my knowledge, is, you know, keeps coming up, is who does what and can we be more definitive about who should do what?
Yeah.
Um, I mean, the position adopted in the current Local Government Act is is agnostic. You know, we don't, we don't really know because we've told the councils that they're to respond to their community's needs. So we don't really know what they're going to put their hands up to do and and we don't want to unnecessarily restrict it. Um, so I I I actually haven't come across anywhere, um, not that I've been everywhere, but uh, where where a a precise distinction has been made to work.
Hmm.
And I'm not sure that it's desirable in the final analysis to do it. I mean, we're all very conscious of of rapid changes in society and the and the environment we're operating in and and so on. So today's definitive distinction could be tomorrow's problem.
Yeah.
Um, we just, we just don't know enough. So I I think it's, what I suggested here was that, um, that there could be three, and look, others might come up with something much better, but I suggested there could be three tests on cost shifting, you know? Is is it something that is appropriately done at the local level? Is it reasonable for the local community's rate payers to meet part or all of the cost? And if necessary, are state and govern- state and federal governments willing to provide supplementary grant support and make sure that, in the case of rate pegging, that the council has access to enough revenues to do the things it needs to do? Um, if if those three tests were applied, then I think we could make progress in the endless debate about cost shifting.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks so much. Um, I'm just looking at my colleagues to see if they had any, um, further questions. Um, look, I might, um, I might just, we might just finish there, we've got a couple of minutes left. But, uh, did you have any further, Dr. Manicon? No. Thanks so much.
Thanks, Chair.
Uh, Professor, for giving time, um, to be here today and for all your work in putting together your submission. Um, the committee secretary, I will be in touch if there's any questions on notice. Thanks so much.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much to, uh, welcome to our next witnesses for this inquiry. Um, I would like to start by asking you to to state your name, position, title, starting from my left, um, and swearing either the oath or the affirmation.
Yeah, um, my name is Paul Roth, I'm the CFO at Camden Council. So I swear that the evidence now about to give by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help me God. Thank you.
And my name's Andrew Carfield, I'm the General Manager of Camden Council. I'll also take the oath, I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Thank you. And would either of you like to start by making a short opening statement?
Uh, sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, thank you for the opportunity to discuss council's submission, and I would also like to commend the committee's work on this important issue. Uh, there are several things about Camden local government area that are particularly noteworthy. Camden's the fastest growing local government in Australia. In the five years that led into the twenty-one census, Camden's population grew by forty-nine percent. The next highest growth rate for a Sydney council over the same five years was the Hills at eighteen percent. Uh, by comparison, New South Wales at the same time grew by just four point nine percent. So the pace of growth that we're experiencing in Camden is unlike anything else in Sydney or New South Wales. The demographic profile of Camden is also a contrast to other parts of Sydney. Camden has a young and rapidly diversifying community. The median age of a Camden resident is just thirty-three, and there's more naught to four-year-olds than any other, uh, age cohort. Today Camden's community has a population of approximately a hundred and thirty-five thousand residents. And over the next ten to fifteen years, um, our community will again double in size to more than two hundred and fifty thousand. We're committed to delivering not just housing, but also the infrastructure that's required to support our growing community. And I have to highlight that the common planning assumptions being used to estimate future growth by all state government agencies are significantly underestimating the pace of growth in our local government area. Uh, this is leading to some unacceptable delays and poor outcomes in the delivery of essential infrastructure, including water and sewer, schools and public transport. Uh, just to illustrate this point, when the first, uh, primary school opened in Oran Park, it opened with twenty-one kindergarten classes. The second primary school, um, that opened in Oran Park in twenty twenty-one, the Baramara Primary School, uh, it's only been open for some three years, and today the its playgrounds are already being covered by demountable classrooms. Uh, we now have temporary primary and high schools, um, in Gregory Hills. And the land to deliver the new permanent high school in Gregory Hills, uh, um, is only going through the process of being acquired by Schools Infrastructure, New South Wales. Um, and that land is being acquired in a commercial precinct, and we would say at a premium price. Um, in our growing communities of Oran Park and Leppington, our future growth areas, um, we're committed to delivering housing, jobs, local services and high-quality urban precincts. Uh, managing the delivery of local infrastructure to support our growth represents the biggest financial challenge for our council. Uh, we'd welcome the opportunity to further discuss our recommendations for changes to development contributions planning that would support greenfield development, as well as our recommendations relating to the rate peg. Uh, thank you for the opportunity, uh, to provide evidence, and we'd welcome the committee's questions.
Thanks so much. Um, just looking at my colleagues now for questions, I'm happy to start. Yep, um, sure. Thank you for appearing today. Um, we've adopted to just have free-flowing questions, so you might get questions from from anywhere across the room. Um, you talked a bit at the start about the population of Camden, obviously you're a a massive growth council, um, which we've heard from from you, it's doubled over the past decade. Um, we often hear that the rapid population growth inhibits financial sustainability, has that been the case for your council?
Uh, firstly, I'd just say that, you know, we have been through pretty rigorous, um, assessments around our future financial sustainability, and we believe that our council's in a sound financial position. We have huge risks looking forward. So if I could talk about population growth and the cha- challenge that presents us today, we have two very different growth fronts. One, uh, for example, in Oran Park, is being controlled by a single landowner, Greenfields Development Company. Uh, they are delivering largely the local infrastructure that's required to support that part of our fu- future community. And they're doing it in a coordinated way through a voluntary planning agreement with the council. That agreement is worth some two hundred million dollars, and it's delivering not just roads and parks, but also community facilities such as the leisure centre, a sixty-five million dollar leisure centre, which will open later this year, uh, as well as community centre, library and sporting fields and improvements. That's been a very successful, um, part of our growth story at Camden. Another quite different growth front exists in Leppington. Uh, we've been through a rigorous, uh, planning proposal process, and we're presently within that process for Leppington. It's ambitious, it's looking at, uh, a further ten thousand five hundred new dwellings in the Leppington Town Centre, eleven thousand new jobs into the future to accommodate, uh, a community in that precinct of more than twenty-five thousand residents. Unlike Oran Park, Leppington has fragmented land ownership. So there are several hundred landowners and stakeholders involved in that future development process. And as a result of that, uh, council needs to act in some ways as the lead developer by acquiring land, uh, that's required to support new improved roads. At present in Leppington, if you went through there today, you would see rural-type roads with, uh, ten-metre, uh, road corridors that need to be expanded to much wider roads that will accommodate urban growth, as well as new drains and riparian corridors and precincts for sporting fields and 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 playing areas and other infrastructure. So council as the lead developer will have the task, which we have already estimated, to acquire some three hundred and twenty-three parcels of land at a cost of a billion dollars. Our challenge there is that the, uh, the funding that we will receive through development contributions occurs after the fact. And it will be piecemeal and without, um, a a much more coordinated upfront effort to delivering that local infrastructure, there will be delays, uh, there'll be challenges, and there'll be escalating costs. Um, so what we're trying to avoid in in our, um, looking forward at the Leppington growth is situations like we've seen it with the Oran Park primary schools, where we're not able to provide infrastructure in a timely way, but certainly well after the time that it's demanded by our community. Uh, it, a a billion dollars of land acquisitions is beyond the capacity of any council, uh, to deliver. So that's that's something that we're confronting today, and, um, we certainly have some ideas and recommendations, um, for change in that space.
And, uh, look, I'd invite you to make those, um, if there, obviously, there's some that's sort of alluded to in your report.
Yes.
But obviously, anything that you have, um, any experience that you've had, uh, from that where, um, you know, particularly if there's a role the state government can play in avoiding some of that.
Uh, we think that the state could have a much more significant role to the rollout of of infrastructure demands in in, for example, the Leppington precinct. Uh, Landcom, as an agency, were involved early in the delivery of Oran Park. Um, they're no longer involved in the Oran Park development. But a, but an agency such as a Landcom that could, uh, help to, uh, uh, undertake the the land acquisition process for those three hundred and twenty-three parcels of land, uh, could help to streamline the local infrastructure and state infrastructure that's required to support that community, would certainly accelerate the development process. Uh, if we're to tackle this piece by piece, it'll be slow, it'll be clumsy, and it will, uh, have much greater financial risks for our council.
Could I maybe just?
Go for it.
On on that point, um, just ask if you could expand on a section of of your submission, and I'll just quote. Community facilities, leisure centres, libraries and community centres should be included in the essential works list that determines what a contribution plan reviewed by IPART can collect for. It should not be the responsibility of general rate income to provide infrastructure needed by new communities. Can you just expand on that, please?
Sure. Uh, through through the process of of preparing a contributions plan, uh, for developers, we have to, uh, determine an essential infrastructure list, and that essential infrastructure list precludes things like, uh, buildings, uh, for community facilities. It actually even precludes some improvements for sporting fields. I think we're only unable able to have grass playing surfaces, but not more more substantial, uh, drainage and other improvements that can help, um, more extensive utilisation of those playing surfaces. So we're finding that even as we acquire new sporting fields, we're having to upgrade them straight away. Um, but certainly not being able to collect contributions for things like libraries, leisure centres, um, community halls and buildings, uh, is a significant financial impost onto our community into the future. We were able to secure those kinds of outcomes through a voluntary planning agreement process in Oran Park. Uh, but unless we can secure the equivalent arrangement through some other voluntary process, it would be up to council through grants or other means to, uh, attempt to create those facilities in a community like Leppington.
Thank you. That's a very good question. Um, Dr. Manicon?
Thanks so much for being here today, and we've had a lot of discussion in this inquiry about, um, the particularly unique needs of councils and, um, the overview of the demographics that, um, you're dealing with are a really excellent example of that. Um, I was interested in your written submission, um, you talked about community facilities not being included in an essential work list that determines what a contribution plan reviewed by IPART can collect for. Um, and I think most of the community would probably agree with your assertion there that leisure centres, libraries and community centres are are essential community infrastructure. Um, do you have particular examples of that need or what difference specifically would it make at Camden if that change was implemented?
If the change was implemented, it would mean that we could collect, uh, greater contributions from developers so that we could fund not only, uh, the acquisition of land for those purposes, but also the land and the buildings. In fact, the- In fact, the buildings that are required or those additional improvements are actually a fairly small component of the overall cost, some five percent. So it's like asking for an additional five percent so that not only council can acquire land, but also make improvements on the land such as building a library or community centre.
Thanks.
Could I ask then, in addition to capital, you also mentioned recurrent expenditure. Can you talk about how you would see changes being made that would allow for that to occur?
Well, our council has been doing a lot in terms of increasing the level of capital expenditure to support our growing community. If you look at our four-year capital programme, it's a billion dollars. We're a council serving a community of a hundred and thirty-five thousand residents. I don't think you would find another council of our size with such a large capital works programme. In terms of our operations and funding our operations for that expanded set of local infrastructure, we're relying on growth. So our rate peg amount has been set by IPART for the next financial year at eight point two percent, which includes a growth factor. IPART have had a growth factor in play now for several years. You know, we have the privilege of being named in the media often as the highest rates increase of any council in the state. It's a little bit misunderstood in the community. It doesn't necessarily mean we're passing on eight point two percent to every resident in terms of their rates increase. But if we look in the future, how we'd be able to afford this infrastructure, it relies on our growth and also our good financial management. So we've had, we're in a good financial position today. We're projecting our growth realistically. Our growth projections are much higher than the state's equivalent growth projections for our local area. But with that growth and the growth in our rates revenue, we will be able to afford the infrastructure that we're building.
And what about the recurrent expenditure? How, can you comment on that? How every time you open a leisure centre, I don't have to tell you, or a swimming pool or whatever, even a playing field, I mean, there's always ongoing recurrent expenditure, staff and other on costs. That will come out of your general rate?
Yes, yes, it will. Look, we're opening a new leisure centre later this year. We have a contract in place for the operations of that leisure centre, but you're right, we'll have to operate that leisure centre. We also have to depreciate the building assets and do the maintenance and other work that's involved each year. I'm not sure if Mr Roff, our CFO, would like to comment further. But our increasing rates revenue as a result of our increase in properties, ratable properties each year, as well as our IPART rate peg with a growth factor, you know, on our next ten-year projections, we're in a sound financial position.
We've made a very deliberate decision that from a capital perspective and to building capital, it's to be built effectively from contributions plans or effectively from state government grants. If they don't arrive, well, then we effectively won't be proceeding with the capital. That effectively means then that general funders are funding the operational side of things and we ensure that those recurrent costs are in our long-term financial plan and they're effectively planned that way. If over that period of time or over that ten-year timeframe and we're effectively moving to a twenty-year timeframe on the basis that we have so much growth, because it may require a special rate variation in the future. But over the next ten years with the growth factor included, it's identifying that we are financially sound, providing we keep to those principles that I just spoke of.
Thank you.
Just looking at my colleagues, any questions?
And apologies that I was out for a moment, so it may have been asked already. But in terms of Camden's particular unique scenario in being a growth council and I think as you put it in your submission, forward funding infrastructure and how that facility is assisted by the state government effectively, is there any assistance for you in being able to forward fund that infrastructure, low-cost loans and the like? Is there something that you believe that the state government should be doing to enable you to be able to deliver more housing and forward fund that infrastructure?
Yes, and again, through you, Madam Chair, we feel there needs to be a different mechanism so that we can forward fund the acquisition of land in a new growth precinct like Leppington. With the fragmented land ownership there, it makes it very, very difficult to acquire all the different parcels of land we need. If that's deferred into the future, the cost will increase. So in many ways, as the land's re-zoned and starts to be developed, it becomes more valuable and the task gets more and more challenging for our council to acquire the lands we need to expand roads, drains, create playing fields. We think that there needs to be a stronger mechanism to do that upfront acquisition, whether that's through interest-free loans, whether that's through a state agency intervention like a Landcom, sharing the cost and the risk associated with that growth into the future. But I think the task for our council, the billion dollars of land acquisitions, before we can receive any income from the development is too great.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just got one that I might throw in. Thank you, Chair. And this kind of also relates a little bit, and I guess I'm getting to a practical example here. It relates to another inquiry that we're running into the pound system. I'm aware that Camden is one of the, there's quite a few councils now that don't actually have a functioning pound and that they've got a temporary setup and I believe that's now happening through a vet practice. And that's been happening for some years. And this morning we heard from another council of a cost-shifting example was the companion animals. And we heard the other day as well, more people have companion animals, which means that there's more companion animals being lost, more companion animals being dumped and a significant cost increase to be able to run that service on councils. Just sort of on that real practical level, I'm just wondering from your perspective, you know, what needs to change and what needs to happen to ensure that councils can actually run a proper pound or rehoming service, but can also obviously afford to pay for the essential services that the community needs? We've heard a lot today about how do councils sort of prioritise the small amount of money that they've got and particularly then how do we deal with that when it's not meeting the community expectations?
Okay. Through you, Madam Chair, some good news. While we are operating today out of that smaller facility in Rossmore, we do have plans now to build a new companion animal facility which will be in Smeaton Grange. We received state grants through the Westinvest programme to do two things. The one, build a companion animal or pound facility as well as a nursery. And we're combining the two into one building. So we'll have a community nursery and pound together. The costs of our management of companion animals are increasing. And if I talk to anyone in our industry, they have a similar view that the costs are really quite significant in terms of our ranges, the responsibilities we have, rehoming of animals, the impact of COVID and the sort of the implications of households no longer being able to keep their animals is real. I'm aware that in Queensland, there's a different model where there's an annual fee for animal registration. In New South Wales, it's a once-off fee. The fees that we receive for animal registration would go nowhere near the cost of delivering that service. And unless we're to go back into general revenue for rates, which is competing against other service areas, we're not going to go near the actual cost of the needs of that service. The needs are growing certainly in a community like ours, which has, you know, with new homes and new residents, we also have new companion animals.
And so what are some of the solutions? Like what should we be recommending from this inquiry to deal with that?
Look, I think the first part of our challenge in providing a permanent and suitable home and place for companion animals has been resolved through the grants that we've received. And we will commence construction on that new facility very soon and it'll be a great facility for our community. Our bigger problem is the operating costs, recurrent operating costs. I don't think that can adequately be resolved without revisiting the registration income or other income streams that could help support that service. Without that, I think you may find that there'll be a variable service provided by different councils. Our council takes its responsibilities in this space very seriously. We care for our animals. We're a no-kill or very, very low-kill type of facility when we impound companion animals. But I think you'll find a lot of variability across our industry, given the very limited revenue streams that are available.
And one of the, sorry, I've actually lost my train of thought there. I might come back to you. There was, I had a follow-up question. I've lost it, but I'll come back. Thank you.
Thanks so much. I wanted to ask a further question around your references to the community facilities that you were talking about earlier, which aren't in that essential works list. In terms of, and I know you mentioned the one at Oran Park that you're co-construing. It's a sixty-three million dollar leisure facility, is that correct?
Yes.
And will the developer, so you're co-construing with the developer, will the developer help to fund the ongoing cost of that facility?
No, so the...
Should they?
Well, the developer has provided the funds, the sixty-three million dollar cost of the new facility to build the asset. However, its operations and its depreciation and those costs are passed on to council. And the way that we will need to pay for those ongoing operating costs is through increased rating revenue for more properties that are subdivided and more ratable properties. We think that that can work in our circumstance. We certainly think that facility is necessary. We would not have been able to build it as early in the development cycle without that funding coming online. So had we not have been able to reach an agreement that we did through that voluntary planning agreement with this developer, it would have meant that we would have been limited to just acquiring land and then searching for grants and other opportunities to build a new facility.
Sure. Are there specific measures that are put in place by your council to uphold the quality of services in the face of, you know, the significant change that you're going through?
Yes, and I mean, our Chief Financial Officer may have views on this too. I would say that we set our standards quite high in Camden. We're a proud community. We deliver quality services to our residents. We had a survey, a random survey of residents which we undertook late last year. It showed us that our residents are very satisfied with the services we deliver for them. And I think each community has to have a say in the standard of service that they expect. So again, there's probably not a one-size-fits-all in terms of a service standard and the cost associated with those services for every council. Certainly, our work through our integrated planning and reporting and our work in understanding the community's needs today and into the future is to try and help us understand those service levels and what's the most important to our community.
Through you, Madam Chair, I'd just like to say that, you know, obviously we do a lot of planning around those operational costs as to when they're coming online and how we're effectively funding those. Also, part of the integrated planning and reporting process is that we effectively have obviously in place a resourcing strategy which identifies our asset management plans, policies and all those things have been consulted with the community, which sets the standard, which links back into the long-term financial plan, which tells us how much it's going to cost to maintain it and keep it.
Wonderful. So you're using the IPNR framework in quite a robust way, it sounds. We heard earlier about the fact that some may or may not be using that quite so much.
I have a bit more faith in my colleagues than that.
Do you think councils regularly get the best possible value for their tenders and infrastructure costs?
Look, I might ask our CFO to respond to that one.
Through you, Madam Chair, we obviously have the appropriate procurement processes in place in relation to policies and procedures and how we use those. It's getting harder to get contractors and get people for work these days in relation to just, I suppose, cost of living and the way things are. So from our value, from our perspective, we go through thorough tender processes which are completely, you know, independent and reviewed. And I still think we get value for money. If we effectively get to a process where we may only have one tenderer, then we would go back out to the market again. The issue there is that, you know, you would expect that the professionals that are viewing those tenders would understand whether they believe they're getting value for money or not. And we have some very experienced people in our organisation around capital projects and things to understand. And I suppose the issue for us is that we've got a lot of history in relation to building things and doing things so we know very well where effectively the value for money is.
You mentioned there about the staff. Do you have the staff and the skills to perform all the sort of extra work that you are being required to do as a...
I would say, unlike other councils, we're growing in terms of our staff complement each year. So each year we would typically grow by twenty to thirty staff members. So we are having to prioritise, like what are the areas of our service under greatest pressure? But with our growth in residents, our growth in ratable properties, our growth in revenue means we are growing as an organisation as well. So rather than going through the exercise of looking for cuts or rationalising staff each year, we're actually focusing on where we grow.
And do we need to ensure that there is a pipeline of skilled workers in Camden to meet that growing need and make sure that workforce can grow fast enough? And is there anything that you're currently doing?
Yes, I mean, one is being an organisation that people want to work for. And we'd like to think we've got a very good culture at Camden Council. We seem to compete very well in terms of attracting staff to our organisation. Again, through our employee surveys, we're getting very strong results around our culture as a council. In terms of building the skills and capability in our community, I think there's great opportunities. We have, as I was expressing earlier, a very young community. We've got lots and lots of naught-to-four-year-olds and primary school and secondary school-age children in our community. How we're able to keep the local talent and give them opportunities to work in things such as local government creates real good opportunities for us. We should be, and we are partnering with University of Western Sydney and other institutions to help create the skills that are needed to get local work. While we have a very low unemployment rate in Camden, we have the largest growing jobs deficit in our region. So we're fastest-growing council, but we do not have enough local jobs. So council is just one employer locally, but we need to do more in terms of attracting local employment in our space.
Okay, interesting. How is the increase in, you know, taking into consideration what you've just said, how is the increase in, you know, Camden Council's operation? How is that impacting your ability to recruit staff or is it the case that it isn't?
It is creating opportunities. As I said, we're taking on board new staff each year and each quarter. We are looking at opportunities to provide entry-level roles for people who are graduating from high school and also graduates from university. So we are looking to create traineeships, apprenticeships and cadetships and those styles of roles that will attract the younger talent within our community. That's very important to us looking forward, being able to grow local talent. You know, but it's a competitive market, so all councils and some other employers are competing for the same individuals. But we'd like to think that we're doing a lot in this space to attract people to really good roles in local government.
Interesting. Is there a role for apprenticeships, you would say, in that, when you talk about...
Yes, yes. And we've got, you know, in terms of mechanical or whether it's, you know, landscaping and a whole range of different spaces that we can offer apprenticeships.
Thank you. Just looking at my colleagues, if you had any further questions.
I think I've remembered my question. I might just, and sorry, we're throwing back to pounds. I just had a couple of follow-up questions. You mentioned the companion animal registration fee that does come to councils. And we have heard on the other day, this inquiry, that that can range from, you know, like a million dollars... like a million dollars to a few dollars, depending on which council it is. I'm just wondering if you had a rough idea of, and I'm happy to take it on notice, a percentage of how much it covers of the cost that it requires to run companion animal services, particularly the pounds and rehoming services? And, um, yeah, I guess, yeah. And also like how much of it actually goes directly into that pound service? Because I know that that money can be used more generally. And whether or not it's 100% going into the pound and it only covers 5% of the costs, for example. If you could give me some kind of idea on that.
I can confidently say that we would be subsidising the cost of that service. However, it might be a good thing for us to take that on notice and come back with some information on the actual income that we receive from registrations and the cost of the services that we have to deliver in that area. So we'd be happy to do that.
That'd be really useful, yeah, great, thank you.
Thanks. Thanks so much. Look, I might just go back to, did you have any questions? No, okay, I'll go back to my questions now. In terms of cost recovery now, I'd asked our colleagues a similar question today. Council charges obviously for a broad range of services, childcare, sporting, libraries that we've mentioned, which are all, you know, services that your community would expect. Do you make any money from these?
I might ask our CFO to talk about some of the areas where we do derive commercial revenue and maybe explain that as well.
Yeah, through you, Madam Chair. Most of the fees and charges that we would charge for things like leisure facilities and those types of things are not on the basis of effectively cost recovery. They're more on the basis of considering what others are also charging in relation to ensuring that, you know, the community's not paying so much more elsewhere than in one local government area. There are some that are on the basis of cost recovery, so we obviously work out what it is that we will cost for the year and then we look at the fees and charges that will be applied. And when you go through effectively our fees and charges, it identifies separately those that are cost recovery, those that are effectively legislated and those that are effectively determined by council.
Is there any capacity to invest in assets that might generate a return for council down the line?
Yes, and we have a couple that are doing very well in that space. So being, we moved our council administration building to Oran Park around 10 to 12 years ago. But we retained the original council building assets there in Camden, as well as our administrative functions in Nerralon. Those buildings are now under a commercial lease. And I think the CFO might be able to give us some rough numbers on what revenue streams we derive from those.
It's around a million dollars a year.
Great, that's fantastic. Does Camden Council outsource any services and if so, which ones?
A good example would be our leisure and aquatics. So we've just been through a tender service or tender process for those services. So that's delivered by others who are expert in that space, who have a skill set and also very capable staff that can deliver that service. That's one example.
And so when you talk about the decision to outsource, I'm assuming it's because, as you say, the skills and expertise. Are there any other reasons as to why that's been outsourced?
We haven't, we haven't had, we haven't directly provided those services for a considerable time in our history. So it's been outsourced for at least 10 years. But we've recently been through a refresh tender process, which is again, looking at the competition in the marketplace to get the best outcomes for our community. If we had to grow the skills and the employees to deliver that service, it would take some time to do that.
What role has the, a cap on council's limitations to collecting revenue effectively, the rate peg, played in the outsourcing of services? If any?
I'm not sure it's played a strong role. In terms of the rate peg and in terms of the growth factor that's applied in Camden's context, we're working within our means to make that work into the future. The difficulty we have with the rate peg and the new methodology that's been introduced by IPART is it doesn't reflect the years that we missed out on that income. So it's only been, the growth factor's only been in play for two to three years, but there's no catch up.
And so what does that mean for you?
What it means in our context is we've been growing rapidly across the last 10 years and only more recently has a growth factor been applied to our rate peg. So it means that there's still a gap in the funding that we didn't receive earlier than the rate, than that additional part of the rate peg was introduced. In our context, as a growing council and growing community, if we were to seek a special rate variation from our community to help us finance our growth areas, it would be a very difficult proposition to introduce.
And why do you say that?
Because the established parts of our community would feel it's not their responsibility to pay for the growth infrastructure of another part of the community. So as our CFO explained earlier, we've taken a view that development contributions and grants should be used to fund the capital costs of new growth areas. The revenue that we will derive in the future from rating stream or from rating revenue will be used to help to operate those new facilities and to replace the assets into the future.
In your submission, I'll just talk quickly about the rate peg. In your submission, you say the cost of living pressures in our communities are real and have to be factored in how and when the community is burdened with the rate increases. This is something that the sector should be able to determine in their own context, based on a set of transparent criteria. Should the rate peg change in any form? Can the state government ensure that councils will charge rates that the residents are able to pay?
Look, again, Madam Chair, that's quite a complex question. I guess from my perspective, and I'd be interested to know the thoughts of our CFO as well, the risk if councils are to set their own rates without a rate peg amount, is that some items, such as the depreciation and replacement of aging infrastructure, may be deferred into the future? So those costs may be hidden until we've got failing infrastructure across our local government area. And then it's like the next generation are having to pay for the lack of funding that was put towards the maintenance renewal of infrastructure for a significant period of time. So that's a risk. That if councils set their own rates, they won't properly estimate the future costs of some of the depreciation and renewal requirements of infrastructure.
Through you, Madam Chair. I think with the rate peg is that, I don't think there's anything wrong with the rate peg per se. I think the issue is around the process of increasing through special rate variations and the complexity around that and the time it takes for that to effectively happen. I think councils have adopted strongly the IPNR framework and I think that there needs to be more autonomy in relation to councils having a say in their future. From my perspective, that a council can make a decision to say increase rates a couple of percent above what effectively the IPART decision is, which means that long term they have small increases versus effectively being stuck with a rate peg and in 10 years, 20 years' time having to put up 50 or 40%, whatever increase through, and that's what hurts people. So I just think there needs to be more work done and understanding how it is that you can effectively say that there could be a tiered system whereby it says if you want to do an extra 0 to 5%, then you've got to do this, this is the criteria, 5 to 10, this is the criteria, 10 to 15, full application to IPART. It's, and we have a thing called capital expenditure reviews, which go through what you're required to do in relation to when you construct capital. And it has some very specific criteria around what's required. There's no reason why a same type of framework could effectively be applied to the process of the rate peg as to how the autonomy could be introduced to local government.
I'm interested in hearing more about, you talked about the population factor and the fact that there is a lag there specifically for Camden of, you know, approximately seven years. Say if you use the example of it, you've been growing for 10 years. Have you done any work to model based on what it now is, what the growth factor now is? Have you done any work to model what it is or how much it is in fact that you are behind? If that makes sense?
Yeah, I might ask our CFO if he's able to respond to that.
Those from that perspective, not on the past, but effectively obviously forward looking as to the growth factor being included as it is, that what would the percentages be required to retain or remain financially sustainable? But I suppose in general, the rate peg from my perspective, while over the last two years, IPART has done incredible work and some very good work in refining effectively the way the rate peg is done, there still is catch up factor from my perspective for the whole industry. And the issue here is that the base amount of revenue that most councils are receiving is below what it should be. Now, it's okay to continue to add the right rate peg on top of that, but if your base is wrong from the start, you're never going to win, it's never going to happen. You need to correct the base.
Yeah, so how big would that increase need to be?
That would be different for every council, to be perfectly honest with you. And there has to be a review that IPART would have to do on each council. And I think our previous presenter talked about IPART doing financial sustainability reviews.
It was a Treasury Court, yeah, a court review.
That's right.
So. And if there was that major adjustment in the short term, how can we be sure we don't end up in this place in another, you know, 10, 20 years, for example?
Let's give you a question on the basis it really requires sound financial management and ensuring that effectively, you know, I can't comment for everyone, every practitioner at every council. Because every council's different and every council has different needs.
Did you have anything to add to that?
No, I think, again, Madam Chair, as our CFO said, the, um, the community needs to have a role as well in terms of what are its priorities and the service levels that it would like us to deliver in our context. And it's pretty hard to standardise that across our region or our industry. So I think that any, any application of a rate peg amount just needs to be nuanced enough so that communities can have an influence in that process as well.
With the baseline increase that you sort of referred to, I know that would be obviously different for each council. What would it be for Camden Council? What would that look like for Camden?
It's a difficult question to answer on the basis that we're experiencing so much rapid growth that our projectors change all of the time in relation to timing around things. So it's a difficult question. We'd have to go back and review, have a look at the best way to apply it, but.
Is that something you're happy to take on notice and have a look at?
I'm happy to take it on notice, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks. Were there any final questions or remarks? No? Thank you so much for making time to be at this inquiry today. We really appreciate the time that you've taken to give evidence and in making your submission. The committee secretary will be in touch if there's any questions on notice. Thank you. That concludes our hearing for today.
Thank you.
Thank you.